Hello.
I'm great.
Hello. Are you guests?
No, I don't want to see you.
Where are you?
I'm good. Hey.
Good evening, everyone. We will call to order the budget session for August 9, 2012. First Order Businesses Roll Call and Determination of the Quorum. Charlene.
Laurenti.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Wright.
Here.
Clayton.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Doyle.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Sasso.
Here.
Nordstrom.
Here.
We have quorum. Thank you. And as is the practice, the City Council President chairs the budget meeting. I will, of course, stick around for any questions and discussion. And I will now turn the gavel over to Council President Bonnie Peterson. Bonnie?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted a few reminders that tonight, again, it's just information. We're going to make all our big decisions Monday night. Hopefully, that'll be our last budget hearing that will be needed. So if you have questions for people, again, in the audi-- make sure that you ask them tonight. For people in the audience, if you're scheduled to speak, we'll just be having you speak if we have questions for your group. We've asked, I believe, we've sent word out to not actually give formal presentations and so that we can move along and get our questions answered as expeditiously as possible. Does anyone here on the council have a question or anything for tonight already to start with? Okay, and I believe Mr. Alderman Wright is going to be leaving us today for some other impending duty that he has.
He's leaving at quarter to seven for a VFW.
Okay, for the VFW. He wears many hats.
Not the bar. I've got a chicken. I want to die by the hour.
He is trying to plug their services once again. Okay, so first on the agenda, we have Mr. Joel Landine for the Attorney's Office. Joel, does anyone have questions for Joel? Oh, and also, I did, like I did last week, was I kind of, if you had asked questions before, I printed them in the order that we had them, so. Okay, Joel, you weren't here last week, but what we did, if there weren't any questions, if you felt there were some highlights that you wanted to tell us some commonly-- common concerns that people have about your department. Thank you.
Thanks. Obviously, our budget's gone up quite a bit from the budgeted amount this year to next year. The majority of that expense is the additional attorney that's been approved. We are currently in the process of backfilling Allison's position that's closed. And we are, in fact, right before this meeting, we went through and came up with a list of applicants to interview. So we are pretty close to being up to full staff. One of the other major things that you authorized this year through moving some funds, obviously because our salary this year went down initially quite a bit, we moved some funds and we are also purchasing law office management software. We have the contract. We're just working out some details on that, and then we'll be moving forward with that as well. I hope that will kind of streamline some of our operations. One of the features they'll have is a time tracking function, which I think will be good for maybe in the future, looking at interdepartmental charges and-- but also just for supervision and being able to track what people are doing and how long a time certain projects are taking, and so we would have better answers for you on some of that. Obviously, the new attorney, one of the focuses has been on ordinance enforcement and doing things, and initially, it's going to be with substandard housing. One of the big ones has already been initiated, one of landlords. We've already started some action in that regard, and hopefully, when the new attorney comes onto staff, we can really move full speed into that. And I'm going to talk with Allison about that. Allison Marsland in our office is the person that is going to be in charge of that ordinance enforcement position, and she's already been moved into that position, so. The other increases in our budget really came from, we added a professional services line item. This year, we've had a couple of expenses come in for professional services. The reason there wasn't a professional services previously, we were still getting a lot of the same services, but they were being charged back to different departments. And it was, a decision was made this year to move some of that back under us where it probably really belonged. Some appraisals that we've gotten done and things, this is where that's going to be paid for, and that's why we added the professional services line item. We also have a little bit extra in the miscellaneous, which is some of our dues and subscriptions, which went up, and supplies. We are looking at purchasing some new computers next year, we're in that rotation, so some of the increase was for new computers. And then with the new attorney, obviously, the supplies went up. And then the supplies have been held flat for a couple of years, and when I was starting to put the budget together this year, I was informed that we had needed a supplemental appropriation every year for the past couple of years to pay for supplies because really what had been budgeted at the beginning of the year was not sufficient. So we factored in what the actual cost of the supplies was and what we estimated, so that's part of the increase in the supply budget. And then also, with having an additional attorney, we added a little bit extra in there to account for that as well. That's pretty much the highlight. I mean, we don't have a lot of equipment or anything, so the majority of my budget is really just salaries and benefits.
Attorney's Office? Any questions? Mr. Nordstrom.
Joel, I'm concerned about the space that you have available in your department. So the expansion is moving along okay?
Yeah, actually, everything is going really well. They're almost completed, and we will have enough office, and I think that'll-- you know, really, our space issue at this point with the new office, I think we're going to be fine on attorneys for a while. It's going to really be the documents and the record retention. I think the city as a whole is looking at what we can do to reduce paper and make some of this a little more efficient. And I'm hoping that the law office management software, it has a scanning, so we'll have-- actually, what you'll do is you'll create an item number, and then you'll scan the stuff in. So I'm hoping that maybe we can significantly reduce some of our paper. Because we have to go to court and stuff, we'll never probably completely move away from the paper files. But we get a lot of just little stuff that frankly might not need an actual paper file, but that we could scan the items in and then have it searchable so we could pull it up because I think you'll probably all recognize this, something will come across on an email, and you'll think it's resolved, and six months later or seven months later, it comes back. Well, it'd be handy if we had the ability to scan that in and pull that back and re-access that without trying to go back through old emails and try to recreate that. So I'm hoping that that'll help. But really, at this point, our biggest space issue is the same as many of the other departments are having, which is all the file cabinets and where we put it. And we already have storage over across the street. And in the future, I think that's really more than just my office, it's a city issue to try to reduce some of that so we don't have this offsite storage and kind of move to a paperless environment.
Okay, continue, Mr. Nordstrom.
Just to follow up on your software issue that you have, have you selected the software? And I'm interested in the tracking process that you're going to do on that. So has it been selected yet?
Yes, we've selected West Company, which we have Westlaw, and we use Westlaw for our legal research. We don't have law libraries anymore, and everyone in the office was comfortable with Westlaw. So it's nice because then it'll integrate with our research, then we can have the two, and then it also integrates really well with Microsoft Office in exchange so we can just move emails directly into the files that we have for the items that we create. We looked at several different-- I actually put Allison in charge of it. For those of you who aren't aware, Allison has a background as administrative legal support prior to going to law school. So she knows how a law firm operates their filing systems and handles their files. And so I put her and Maggie Paul in our office in charge of that, and Amy Graves, when she was with our office. And they actually went to the ABA Technology Conference where they had several of these-- we kind of, we did some demonstrations, and they did some research prior to going, and they narrowed it down to a few, and then they went to the conference, and they were able to actually look at and see how some of this stuff actually operated in real life and go through some live demonstrations of it. And after that, decided to choose the West product.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Landine? Okay, thank you, Joel, and I-- it seems like we don't have a single question that the council has that doesn't somehow touch the Attorney's Office, so thank you for your work. Okay, let's see, Fire Chief. Oh, he's already on the spot, thanks. Does anyone have questions for the Fire Chief, right off the bat? You can see that there were several questions asked ahead of time for the Fire Chief that were put on this forum. Okay, Mike, if you want to just kind of hit some highlights or things that we would commonly want to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie, members of council. Just again, to touch on a couple of the high spots for us, this year, our budget did increase. The largest percentage of that increase was due to the reaching a settlement with the International Association of Firefighters, which is our union. As you know, we had a contract dispute that ran for a couple of years, and we did bring closure to that with the leadership of the mayor as well as the council and using an interest-based bargaining, more of a collaborative effort versus an us-versus-them mentality, which was very successful, and we've got, I think, the start of a wonderful working relationship with our union and has the way it should be. So that's a large percentage of our increase. And then also, what we're doing is, in an attempt to flatten our budget or make our budget more predictable for us as management as well as the council and the city, is we did increase a couple of particular line items that address small equipment, things like our air packs that carry our breathing air, our personal protective equipment, like the bunkers or the turnouts or the heavy clothes that we were into the structural fires. Those are very, very expensive items for us. When we outfit some 110 employees in the Operations Division with those, their ensemble so they can fight fire, it's literally hundreds of thousands of dollars. We've relied on a couple of different ways to do that in the past, one being federal grants. Those grants have since dried up. Most of the federal grants now are being put to staffing. The large municipalities in the United States have had to reduce their staffing due to budget concerns. The federal government is now trying to help those cities bolster back their staffing levels, so most of the grant money is going to people now instead of equipment. Second way we tried to fund that equipment was just through one-time purchases. The Fire Chief would come before you at this time and ask for $200, $300, $1,000 to purchase equipment all at one time for the entire department. That made it very, very difficult for planning, both for the City Council, the city, as well as the Fire Chief at the time. So we've added a couple of dollar amounts to a couple of those small equipment line items. So what we're going to do is we put all those equipment purchases on like a 10-year plan. And what that plan does is match the federal standards. We have to replace those, that equipment every so often. And to meet those federal guidelines, those federal standards to keep our firefighters safe, what we did is we just flattened it out and say if it's a $100,000 price tag, we just put $20,000 in there for five years, just to give you an example. It's easy for us to plan. We can put everything on a rotation or a replacement cycle or a replacement plan, and it's much easier for us to manage and it doesn't-- we've been in situations before where funds haven't been available to purchase that equipment, and we've literally had to go outside of those federal standards for some of our safety equipment, and that's an uncomfortable position to be in, so. Those are the two biggest items. A couple of things going on for the future, the Fire Department will continue to get busier as the community grows. For 2011, for instance, our call volume was up roughly about 10 percent. That's alarming for us. We are not proud of the fact that our call volume is going up. In fact, we would rather like to see our call volume go down. So you're going to see a lot of the Fire Department doing things to reduce risk in our community and take more of a prevention or proactive stance in how we deal with emergencies in the city. We did bring on last year a community risk reduction specialist. That person is now studying our data, determining what our needs are, what the community's risks are, and we're going to be more focused and more strategic in how we approach our jobs in the city, so you're going to see some of that language in the Fire Department. We're also getting behind on our large vehicle purchases. We've got a couple of different funding mechanisms for our large fire apparatus. Those can run anywhere from $500,000 upwards to $1 million when we replace our ladder truck. We're looking at a lot of different ways to extend the life of those vehicles because they are very expensive. Problem is, as I just alluded to, is our call volume is up, and we are literally running the wheels off of them. When we talk about infrastructure and the condition of the roads, we talk about chemicals that are put on the roads, all the things that go into wear and tear on your personal vehicle at home. Imagine you're driving that thing, you know, 20,000 miles a year, like our fire trucks. They're large and heavy anyway. When I started, we were getting about 20 years out of them, and we've continued to shorten those timeframes for replacement. We're down to trying to get about 10 years out of those fire trucks, and we're not getting it. So we're going to have to go back to the drawing board and figure out if we can, again, try to flatten that out a little bit and be more predictable. So we're entertaining the idea of actually leasing vehicles. We've met with a couple of fire truck manufacturers. They do have in-house leasing programs. It's very attractive. It's good for them, it's good for us, and there's a lot of large communities out there like Rapid City, they're-- have busier companies are looking at leasing vehicles, and there'll be more to come. I'm just starting to put pencil to paper, so I'd be able to, in several months, be able to give you really a cost-benefit analysis of what that might look like. Partnerships and collaborations, it would be foolish for the Fire Department to have a solo or a silo mentality to not go out and look for partnerships in the budgets that we're faced with. So you're going to see things, the Fire Department's going to partner with people like the County 24/7 program, Western Dakota, looking at a future fire station location, partnering with them. City-County, a joint radio shop that we're going to try to house at the property we purchased at 108 East Main. Cold storage and a training facility also at 108 East Main. And you guys are also aware that we're just now starting some planning pieces and starting to get things lined up for a future headquarters and main fire station downtown. That will be a few years out. And also, the Survivable Space Initiative that we've taken with the wildfires we're having and the buildup of fuels in the western half of Rapid City, where, as all of you have approved, we've been partnering with Parks and Rec to really combine our efforts and do a much better job protecting the community. On the EMS side, our ambulance work, again, the call volume is up, which means increase in revenue, but also means increase in operational expenses. So we're tracking that very closely to see how those 2011 numbers come out in terms of revenue and expenditures. Also, one of the needs we have in our EMS division is a QA or Quality Assurance and Quality Improvement Coordinator. If the revenue shakes out in our enterprise fund, we may come back for either later in this year or even 2014 and ask for-- excuse me, later in 2013, and ask for a Quality Assurance or Quality Improvement Person. Obviously, we would want that to be funded by the enterprise fund. I would not be coming in and asking for additional funding or an FTE, so we hope to be able to fund that internally with our enterprise. And then obviously, Station 1, I mentioned already, future location downtown, and again, a partnership with Western Dakota for an east-side fire station downrange. We're talking five to seven years, but it's never too soon to start talking about it. Lastly, but not least, something that's near and dear to my heart, and I think the organization's going to buy off on it, as I already started to, is accreditation. The Rapid City Police Department has been accredited for a number of years. They've done very well at it. It really states, when they put the accreditation on the side of that uniform or that police car or the side of their building, they're saying that they meet national standards, they meet the bar, they meet the community's expectations, and they're really in the upper echelon of police departments. And I think that's what should the expectation be for public safety in Rapid City. The Fire Department is not accredited at this time. Funding to become accredited boils down to an accreditation manager. In conversations I've had with Chief Allender, he's given me some great insight at how they became accredited, and really, he's had a number of years to study and understand how it really worked, and so he's given me a tremendous amount of advice. But someday, really what we need to make that happen, we can't become accredited with the current staffing we have. We really would have to have an accreditation manager that would look at standards, would take care of our strategic plan, and also long-range planning for the Fire Department as well as accreditation. I'm not asking for anything today, I'm just saying that I've given you an oversight of the department and some things that we're working internally for the next couple of years, so it's really all I have, and I appreciate the time. I could keep going if you--
Okay. Questions for Chief Alderman Wright? Have you been cut off from communication?
Chief, I was just concerned that there's, I'm guessing, about $6 million of equipment or better for your apparatus. In current, what's our funding level right now for the either lease or purchase of that? And how short are we in adequately funding on an annual basis apparatus replacement or a full lease?
There's two places that we're pulling funding for our large vehicle purchases. One is the CIP. We have $200,000 currently out of that budget of that committee that goes to large vehicle replacement. We have two vehicles that are being funded through that mechanism right now. Those are two engines that we bought in 2010. Those were four or five--
Four or 40 apiece?
Yeah, they're roughly about $450,000 apiece, and they're somewhere between a four and a five-year lease purchase on those. The other one, we have a ladder truck right now that's on a lease purchase program that's being funded out of the general fund, which then passes through our budget in the Fire Department. That line item is $107,000, give or take. So right now, we have about $307,000 going to those three vehicles. Problem is, I think they're going to be almost worn out by the time we get to the end of the lease purchase, and so we're going to-- we have other vehicles that are already starting to be showing wear and tear, and the mileage is getting up on them, so we're going to quickly fall behind if we continue to use five-to-- four- and five-year lease purchase programs, so.
So the purpose of my question is to heighten awareness of the council and the city that if you have a $6 million fleet, I could be wrong, but I bet I'm not too far off?
That's close.
In a 10-year life, that should be about $600,000 a year that we're spending, round numbers, the out interest and all that, and we're currently spending $300,000. So I would say we're underfunded our fire apparatus program, just heads up, be aware, and let's go to work on it because we're too short.
Jerry, you picked up on exactly what we've been studying, and that's where we're at, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Sasso.
On the accreditation, and I know basically mentioning hiring someone on as staff, I'm just curious whether or not it's something that also you can pull in a person as a consultant for that.
Excellent. Excellent question. And that's one of the pieces of advice that Chief Allender gave me was, don't try to do it with existing staff. You will, you'll burn your staff out, you won't be able to do it. There are people that, consultants if you will, but you bring them on as full-time staff, they go from department to department, they come in, they take all your data, everything you're doing, all your programs, and they basically stand you up, get you to that accreditation point, and then really, either you do that with existing staff, or you let that person go, let the person go and do it with existing staff, or you keep that person on as a manager, depending on-- again, there's other pieces in terms of planning, like our strategic planning and also long-range planning and things like that, that, one, either I don't have the expertise to really do some of those things, or our current staff really doesn't have, so there's people out there that obviously can do a much better job at it, and they're running those circles all day. There's accreditation platforms that are out there for public safety, and there's only one department in South Dakota that's accredited, and that's Sioux Falls. I think Colorado is around 10, and they have about, I want to say, 15 or so that are going through the process right now. So it's really spreading like wildfire throughout the country, and it just, you can stand up and say that the Fire Department is everything that we say we are when we have that accreditation behind our names, so.
Just so you know, I think you already are, but I understand the desire for the accreditation, so thank you for everything you do.
Mr. Nordstrom.
Thank you for the presentation, Chief. I appreciate what you folks are doing and all the work that's going on, but with the upgrading of the equipment and so on, are we comfortable with the level of training that you're getting on this new equipment and apparatuses and the personal protective equipment, et cetera?
You bet. Training is obviously, because of the nature of our job, with what we ask our employees to do on a daily basis, training is really, other than firefighter safety, is paramount. Probably, training is number two, and training goes along with safety, firefighter safety. So we have, we meet federal standards for training. Each employee in 2011 averaged about 260 hours of training for the year. So we shoot for 20 hours a month. Firefighter typically works 10, 24-hour shifts a month, so they're doing at least two hours a day. So every day they come to work, it is part of their regular routine. Just recently or last year, we purchased software to help facilitate the delivery and the organization and also the tracking of that to make sure that we can accurately track the training. So we have a pretty robust training program in-house, and we work with Western Dakota and the County Fire Service, and training is a big deal for us. So yes, I would say I'm very comfortable with our level of training in all aspects of our job, so.
With the accreditation that you're anticipating, do we need to look further into the training part of it as well?
Interestingly enough, I think if we looked at accreditation and we got a manager in here to start pulling in all of our programs and looking at what we do, and looking at other departments that are accredited, I think we're there. I really just think we need to get in and get somebody to take the thing and make it a project and just hammer it out.
Put the seal on it.
Yep, exactly. So, and it's, obviously, I'm biased, but I think everyone would agree. I travel around the country, and I can tell you that the Rapid City Fire Department, as well as the Police Department and other departments, we really are right out there on the leading edge of what's going on in the country. I mean, Rapid City has a lot to be proud of, and I'm biased about the Fire Department, but really, it's the city in general. You know, we're published and mentioned in national circles all the time, whether it be magazines, trade shows, best practices, a lot of things, Rapid City comes to the surface, so. Accreditation, I think, is just right out there. It's low-hanging fruit. Unfortunately, I just don't have the resources to reach out and grab it right now, so.
One last question, is the spacing issue, especially at the main fire station, and are we anticipating to do-- so I've got a follow-up part of that. I think it's Station 5, the Park Drive station. Go ahead.
We did, we did put, I believe, $300,000 into government buildings under CIP for an addition to Station 5. That's really the last of our stations that could benefit from a couple of dorm rooms. That building was built previous to us doing ambulance work, so it was built for staffing model of four. We're anticipating a staffing model of six when we get ready to add an additional ambulance in the future, which will happen. So we're just really getting that project into that five-year plan, so-- So, when we're ready to staff up another ambulance, when the ambulance can absorb it into its enterprise fund, then the space would be there for us, so... So, we're doing good. And actually, the addition we did to our south fire station this last year, and a new station out north, our facilities are in pretty good shape. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Chief, I just had one question. You said we weren't getting the 20 years. Is that because of just the increased usage, or because of interior products, or both?
The products haven't changed. They've actually improved, if anything, over the years. Just to give you an example, in 1991, we did about 3,600 calls in the Rapid City Fire Department. Last year, we did 14,300. So, we've gone up 11,000 calls in roughly 20 years. So, it's just, a 20-year plan was great back then. 10-year plan today isn't holding up, and we're just, we're a small department doing big department stuff right now, so we're just extremely busy for a city our size.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for everything you do. I think we're going to move into the community investment funds, but, thank you, Chief. Pauline, on this handout that I'd given out today, and it talks over on the column 2013, the proposed, and as you go down the lines, there's a lot of zeros. Can you explain that for us?
I'll start on, basically, I'll start with the Black Hills Vision. This is what has been funded from the general fund typically through the years, and in the past, Black Hills Vision, that's where they were funded from. But as part of the last five-year plan with the Vision Funds, they got funding through there. So, that's why you see zeros in the general fund. The Black Hills Vision group, we used to pay for them out of the general fund, but now, they're out of the Vision Fund under economic development monies. The other ones, whether they're arts and humanities, or health and human services, those typically show as a zero at this point. And then, the $100,000 that each of those groups get, 100,000 shows under Allied Arts, and then, one shows under just health and welfare subsidies. And the letters actually went out for the Health and Human Services ones recently, as far as getting applications in, because once the budget is set, the committee meets and decides who those allocations will go to within the confines of either health and humanities, and then, the other 100,000 goes to Allied Arts, and they do an application process to get organizations for their $100,000. So, that is not allocated out individually until the budgets have been passed. So, when the columns are in the budget stage, they will show zeros, but when they turn to an actual stage, you will see dollars in those columns. That is correct.
Any questions on this, or anything else with the investments? Pauline?
I wanted to point out, I was looking at some numbers on here, trying to get things organized for you guys when I did my comparison, and for whatever reason, I don't know if it got entered into a wrong line item or what, but there was, on the cost center for the DALL, it showed in one spot that their management fee was $95,000, and another spot, it showed about $75,000, so about $20,000 difference. So, in reality, the budget that is before you is actually $20,000 more than what they have in 2012, and I just caught that within the last week. So, just so you're aware of that. Because the intent was to keep all those groups at a level playing field, and so, it was just, it got put in the wrong spot, so it got carried over.
So, it should be 19948, is that right?
The number on this spreadsheet is right, but in the budget book, it's wrong by $20,000 over.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Laurenti, did you have a question or comments?
Not yet, but I'm wondering, are these groups only coming up based on questions?
Right. That was, Pauline, did you?
Thank you, Madam Chair. With the questions that were submitted to me, I sent out a request that all of the community investment groups come here, because the way the questions were worded, I figured there'd be quite a bit of discussion on the community investment groups, and that you may have questions for them specifically, but I didn't know what organization specifically, the way that the question was worded. And so, I invited all of them here tonight for questions. The direction was, please be available for questions, no formal presentations at this time, but I would like you here in case there are questions for your entities. And those that could not be here tonight sent emails, one of which was the CVB, and we had tried to collect questions before that on them. I received none, but, so, that's why they're here. They're not here for a formal presentation. They don't have time slotted for each one, like we did with the department directors. It was just kind of the general conversation, and if you had questions for anyone specific. The groups that are here are listed on your agenda.
Okay. And I would just, I don't know, I sent out an email this afternoon reminding people that people that are for us are volunteers, or paid staff that spend countless hours trying to improve our city, and to keep things pertinent to the questions you have, and you can make your comments on Monday night. Okay. Mr. Laurenti?
I was wondering if we have representatives, they don't all have to come up at the same time, but they're going to be some of the same types of questions for the Allied Arts Fund, for the Journey Museum, for the Dolphine Arts Center. I don't know. They don't all have to come up at the same time, but it's up to them. Absolutely. Why not? Let's do it as a group.
Okay. Why don't we, yeah, why don't we, well, is this Allied Arts right here? Okay, we'll start with you, and then, we'll start another order. Go ahead, Allied Arts. Yeah, I'm going to do that after. What are your questions, Mr. Laurenti?
I was kind of letting him get prepared there, so...
Okay. Sorry.
When you're ready.
I hope. Go for it.
My question is about, how long has the Allied Arts Group been an organized group? If you can give me that, just for starters.
It started in the mid-'70s, and started raising money for local arts organizations, and then, in 1994, took over the city funding, the subsidy, and has been putting those funds out, allocating those through a grant application process to arts organizations here in the city for the last 18 years.
Does the Allied Arts Fund have an endowment?
No, we don't.
What percentage of the subsidy is the Allied Arts Fund's entire budget?
For the Allied Arts Fund, it's about, we take about a 2% administrative fee out of that total $100,000. The rest of that is allocated out to all the arts organizations, to 11 arts organizations in the city, and that totals up to about 5% of their overall budgets.
So, 95% is raised by other means?
Mr. Wright, could you use the microphone, please?
So, 95% of their budget's raised by other means, donations, tickets, and sales?
Yes, all those organizations. The, with the exception of, there are three that are under mandate, and those are the municipal band. I think most of their budget comes from these allocations. The Symphony Orchestra only gets a very small portion of their budget from these. They're under the mandate. Dakota Choral Union, the municipal band, the Ranger Band, and Minnalausa Pioneer Museum.
And then, I have one last question. How long has, I guess, you know, how many years, or maybe you can say just how long has the subsidy from the city been just 5% of the budget? Has it always been 5%?
It varies from year to year, depending on what the, I mean, it's actually become less over the years, since '94, as all of those organizations have grown. That money through that 18 years from the city has stayed pretty constant. It's arranged between the, I think, the low '90s up to the mid-100s, like $110,000. As those organizations have grown, that funding, that investment has not grown proportionally with those organizations.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have questions for Allied Arts? This is your time to ask them, so that you know everything you need to know for Monday night. Mr. Sasso?
The Minnalausa Museum, and that's actually part of the Journey.
I believe so. They would, and theirs is a, they get $1,000, I believe, they got last year, and it's a special agreement under mandate with the city, through a special arrangement, so that that's part of what we're, we automatically give them. There's no application process for them under that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Also, I just want to thank Patrick O'Leary, who is on our Citizens Budget Committee, to help us get to this point. Appreciate your service. Anyone else have questions? Okay. Thank you. I think what we'll do, instead of jumping to the Journeys, we'll go back up to the top of our list on the agenda. Does anyone have questions for the Chamber of Commerce? Okay. The CVB, I don't know if anyone's here.
Just here.
Good evening. I'm Jody Spurlich, the Director of Operations with the Convention and Visitors Bureau. If you have any specific questions, I, no, I'm not supposed to just take your time and give a presentation. I'd love to, and certainly would if you'd like, but...
Okay. Any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Economic Development, Ben Snell? Any questions, or...
Please don't allow me to start, because you know how hard it's going to be for me to stop talking. But I am available for any questions, as well as, we have Terry Haberly, our Vice President, and any questions you have regarding the business incubator, she's here to answer those questions as well.
Are we meeting the needs that your department has to increase economic development in our city?
I believe so. We have enjoyed the support of the city for a long time, and what we're requesting this upcoming year is for the financial support from the city to remain static for this upcoming year. We appreciate the support of the City Council for helping to fund our operations, and we believe that the return on that investment is enormous.
Okay. Mr. Sasso?
Incubator question, just right now, it's still full.
Is effectively 100% occupied. Yes.
It is, and we expect our first graduate in 2013.
Excellent.
Mr. Laurenti?
I had a question about the incubator as well, if you would, and I believe that graduate is, is that the Caterpillar Group?
Exactly, Caterpillar. They have 63 employees right now, so, yeah. They have probably an average wage of about, they have 40,000 of an average wage to start, but the people that are working there are upwards of 60,000.
That's great. Great work.
Them to get out.
Thank you.
Mr. Nordstrom?
Probably about comment for Terry, when Caterpillar leaves, we're going to, we've got a lot of open space then available, correct?
Couple thousand square feet.
Yep. We'll be looking forward to seeing a new tenant up there.
Exactly. And that's why we all need to consider the incubator as a tool for, frankly, Ben and myself at Rapid City Economic Development Partnership.
It's a little bit of a challenge when you're 100% occupied, just like when you have no available office, or industrial, or retail buildings in town. It's a challenge when you don't have those, because the users expect there to be that space, so...
Did you have questions? Any other questions? Okay, the mayor would like to speak.
Ben, in addition to the direct economic development services that you provide, I would like you also to talk about some of the other work that you've done relating to the Opportunity Capture Fund and the Infrastructure Development Partnership Fund, because one of the things that we've done over the last year is consolidate, do some consolidation and streamlining of our economic development processes, which have increased benefits to the taxpayers and the councils. Would you be willing to address that briefly?
Absolutely. Thank you. In addition to the request we have before the City Council to support our operations, the city, through Vision Funding and through seeding, the, both the funds that the mayor just mentioned there, provides an incredible opportunity and competitive advantage for Rapid City to offer companies, whether it's in job training grants, or helping a tenant build out of space, and particularly with the IDPF, or the Infrastructure Development Partnership Fund, that sat at zero balance for quite some time, until this last round of Vision Funding. And I hope that as, in the years ahead, we can actually look to grow that program. What we received during the last Vision allotment was $1.5 million to go into Opportunity Capture Fund, and $1 million to go into the Infrastructure Development Partnership Fund. And the big difference in my mind is, one is an onsite solution to help companies, and the other is with offsite. So, if stuff's not in the capital improvements budget for the city, or if the .16 fund is not adequate to take care of some of those offsite infrastructure needs, it's really nice to have a tool, and as the mayor said, to actually streamline that tool, so that you have a body that's appointed to allocate those funds, and do it in a responsible manner to meet both needs, because it, there are times when, and you never know when those are going to come along, but there's one we've just been working with this past few months, where both of those funds have come into play because of the needs of the particular project. So, I think it's really important, and you're going to see me again during the next round of Vision Funding, asking that we actually amp those funds up from where they are. But I'm very excited, the fact that IDPF is seeded with some money again. Does that answer your question? Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Nordstrom?
Thank you, Madam Chair. When we get down to the next group, it'll be the animal shelter. I've got a question for them, or more of a comment for them, if I may.
Okay.
They're part of the community investments, correct? Yeah?
Yes, but right now, we're on economic development, so...
I understand.
Okay.
Okay. Just one way they can have an opportunity.
They're coming.
Tell me he's tired of me. I get it, Richie, I get it.
Well, Ben, well, thank you for coming, but one of the things I just wanted to point out, for most of us, better jobs, quality jobs, were platforms that we ran on, seeking offers, trying to improve, you know, get kids to stay here. The tools for the economic development that Ben's been talking about tonight is, you know, every dollar we put toward that is going to bring us multiple times of benefit back to our community, so it's very important to help us reach those goals. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and before we get to the cute animals that we still remember from last year, I just, Linda, for the Chamber of Commerce, Linda, I thought I had seen you leave the room, and someone told me...
We were taking care of visitors.
Okay. Someone, and I just had a quick question for you. I think your budget request mainly goes to mailing things out for people that are interested in Rapid City. Is that mostly what our budget goes for?
It's people that are interested in Rapid City. A lot of it is our relocation packets, some of it is our student packets. The young kids, fourth and fifth grade around the nation, study all the states, and so, we get lots of requests for Mount Rushmore State, which is fun. It's a lot of that, and it's also keeping a list of all of our social services and all those things, and making them available to the community when they need it.
Okay. Did anyone else have any questions, or...
But thank you for all that you do, so I'm glad you called me back up, Bonnie. But I also wanted to introduce you to our new Finance Director, because a lot of people haven't met Bill, and so, I brought Bill Gujan, he's our new Finance Director, so that you can meet him. And then, Lynn Kendall, I'm sure you've met, she's with our, she's the Vice President and does a lot of our military and governmental affairs, but thank you for what you do. A lot of what we do too, which I forgot, we do the cracker barrels, we do legislative forums, I mean, we use that money for a lot of those type of things, doing some of our lobbying in DC, which if you have ever joined us, and have gone.
Okay. Pauline?
Not to cut into the chamber time, but I want to let you know that the CVB is here, so, sorry.
While we were gone, Pauline, they called it, and Jody stood up.
Oh, you did?
Yes. Yes.
We had a biker downstairs.
We're not giving CVB double time.
Downstairs. Yes, we had a biker that had lost his phone and then he shipped it to the cashier's department, which is so bizarre. But we helped him out, and so now they think Pauline's a hero.
Okay, great. Way to go. Thanks. Thanks for your, all your teamwork, so.
More questions?
Oh, I'm sorry. Chad?
This is actually not a question, it's more or less just a plug for the last three speakers. Didn't ask any questions of Convention and Visitors Bureau because I think you're doing a great job. I don't have any reason to question your, your budgetary request at this point. Same with economic development, I think you guys are doing, you know, amazing stuff. I'm really learning a lot. Getting on these boards and, you know, and starting to meet the people, and the same with the Chamber of Commerce. Like I said, I don't have any questions for you, so I'm not asking you anything, but it doesn't mean I don't support you. I think you're doing a good job, so. I do appreciate all the hard work you folks have been putting out there for us. And promoting our community, I think it's really on the verge of growing, getting to a spot that Rapid City is going to kind of start to lead the nation in a lot of places. Places to live, quality of life and whatnot, and we're kind of seeing that in some of the reports we're getting, so that's all due to your folks' hard efforts. We appreciate that.
And we hope you all know that we all, I'm going to speak for all of us, you know, we have an open door policy, you know our emails, you know our numbers. Call us if you have questions, we're more than welcome to, to come in and we can sit down and go over anything you have.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, any questions, comments, Humane Society, Mr. Nordstrom? Did you sneak one in your pocket or anything? No, I understand we have people that are allergic, so we love having them though.
Bring hairless ones if that would help next time. I'm Cheryl Peterson, President, for those of you that don't know me.
Could you reintroduce yourself? I was.
Sorry, Cheryl Peterson, I'm the Acting Board President for the Humane Society.
And I'm Kent Brown, Animal Control Senior Officer for a little over 11 years.
Thank you. Mr. Nordstrom.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was noticing in your budget, a little bit of an increase. Hopefully that'll help you out in your program quite a bit. And recently we passed a, an ordinance that had to do with the, for lack of a better way to describe it, yeah, the barking dogs and family feuds and things like that, and we're coming across those. Are you still coming across that issue?
That issue will always be an issue. I hate to put it this way, but plain and simple, every neighborhood has a dog that barks, and every neighborhood has a cranky little old lady or little old man that don't like it. That's basically what it amounts to.
If you have some tools or something that we can use, and I'm not saying tonight, but if there's some tools that we can come up with in the future, let's take the opportunity to explore that.
We actually, every one of the complaints we get, we start off, we try to start off with a bark packet to them that gives them internet places to go, hints and suggestions on why dogs bark and what to do about it, and that seems to help probably in about 80 to 85% of the problems.
Excellent. Thank you.
Mr. Laurenti.
My question is more personal. I have a six-year-old Yorkshire Terrier, a male. He thinks he's an English Mastiff. Can you help me?
Yes, there's a gentleman, his name is Tom West, and he's an animal trainer, and he can help you out through the shelter.
There we go. Thank you very much. I appreciate the work you guys do. If we did it directly as a city, it would cost us much, much more, so the service you provide for us is, is great, so we appreciate your work. Thank you.
Mr. Sasso.
I know one of the things that came up from Chief Allender's presentation was looking at animal control calls as being one of, one of the bigger concerns for the PD. Possibilities of being able to do 24/7 on that.
We did talk briefly about that. The board meets Tuesday night, so we'll discuss it more. Currently with our staffing, we don't, we're not staffed enough to handle that. We would have to gear up staffing a little bit, and of course, we all know that increases budget. But we certainly would be happy to put a proposal together. We want to do what's right for the city, you know, and step up and do what we can. So we would be happy to look at that. I just don't have numbers tonight.
Fair enough.
Also, also the other thing besides staffing, of course, is equipment. Put more people on the street, you have to equip them.
Thank you.
Mr. Wright.
I guess my question is going to be along the same lines as the law enforcement side of your job and organization. Is it adequate? And you also reach out into the county area, do you not, and is that adequate? Where are shortcomings, or are we okay?
Our reach out to the county is, is as requested by the Sheriff's Office. They pay us by the mile, by the call, by the animal, for everything we do for the Sheriff's Office. We also have some other ones that we have that same type of contract with besides the county. As far as their end of it goes, the percentage they pay us for what we do versus the percentage the city pays us, there's a great difference. As far as, of course, unlike everybody else that's in this room, we could always use another officer. However, at the same time, budget restraints don't allow that, so we do what we can with what we've got.
Pauline.
I just want to clarify, it does appear like they received an increase in their budget, but they actually did not. What was approved last year, we ended up doing a supplement to make it right because they, for whatever reason, it was wrong for 2012 too, so. And the budgets that are in the book are the approved budget, so any supplements do not get added to it. So that's why it appears there's a small increase, but in reality, there is not.
Mr. Clayton.
I just have one simple question. If we're not operating 24/7, what are your normal hours of operation?
Animal, well, the shelters open seven days a week for animal reclaim, animal adoption, things of that nature. Animal control wise, we are staffed eight to five, Monday through Friday, on call for emergencies, which basically constitutes five things. 24/7, one of us, there's only two officers, so every other week, one of us is an on-call person. We come out for dangerous animals, injured animals, bats and rattlesnakes, people that get incarcerated that are, that have an animal in their vehicle, PD hauls them to jail, we come get the animal. Ah, am I missing, did I say bites? That's probably the other thing, is animal bites. And then also, when PD is short-staffed, I have yet to turn them down if the first thing they tell me is, we have nobody available, can you? I have never turned the city down on that request anytime I've ever got it from PD. The thing, however, is, is just because a dog is running down the street does not make it a threat, and I will not come out for that.
Would you mind saying, I guess I'm looking for a split in terms of your normal hours of operation, eight to five? And I would think barking dogs nuisance-type calls probably happen more after people are home from work and after 5:00 o'clock, more in the evening. So it would fall on the shoulders of the PD.
To a point, yes. A lot of that, however, they just basically tell the people to call us on Monday morning or whatever, if it's on the weekend. Or they give them our phone number up there and tell them what our hours are. And then I hit them with one of our bark packets the very next day.
Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns? Okay, thank you very much for all your work. Okay, now for the Journey Museum. Thanks, Chuck, for coming.
I'm Chuck Parkinson, the Chairman of the Board of the Museum Alliance of Rapid City, commonly known as the Journey Board. If you've got any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to respond.
Mr. Laurenti.
Journey Museum does have an endowment, am I correct, sir?
It does.
How long has it had that endowment?
The endowment has been in place since 1999, I believe.
Do you know the balance of that?
It's slightly over $100,000. I would like to say that last year we contracted with Convergent Solutions, which is a nationally-known consultant to nonprofit organizations. And one of the discussions was a fundraising activity to include, you know, raising money for the foundation. They, at that time, indicated to us the Journey Museum was not ready to do that because we did not have a strategic plan in place. We did not have a steady, or I should, I want to put this the right way, a steady stream of funding that was available. There was always debate going on within the City Council and the city environment, should the city continue the appropriation to the, to the museum. As a result, Convergent indicated to us, they felt that until the funding situation was in place, people would be very reluctant to provide funding for an endowment. But it's still in our works from that standpoint. It's still part of our strategic plan, and we plan to go forward with that. But right now, we're spending most of our time just getting money to tread water and keep our nose above the, the ground level from that standpoint.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Mr. Clayton.
Good evening. I, I understand Ray Summers, the Director, is soon to retire.
That is correct. He is, we had asked him for notification to leave when he was going to leave. He has indicated to the Board that he's going to leave on May 1st of next year. Our Board had our first meeting since that announcement last month, and we are putting together a, we have put together a timetable to build a search committee to do that, and also to outline what we wanted a new director. Quite frankly, Ray's position was to maintain and stabilize the museum when he was originally hired. Our Board has agreed at this point that the two most important parts for the next director be outreach to the community and fundraising. He's still responsible, whoever that individual is, is going to be responsible for the day-to-day operation of the museum, but those will be the two major factors that the Board has decided on. We have not, you know, gotten exact details done from that standpoint, but we will, we plan to have that done by about the 1st of October.
Okay, you answered my second question before I asked it, so I, I was hoping you would say something in terms of more aggressive marketing so that the, the journey is better known and recognized and would draw more people, more visitors. Thank you.
We're making every attempt at that.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Wright.
Chuck, just a couple of questions. Would you summarize for the group here the collections that you have, and others, the Duhamel, Minnaloosa, and I think the Pioneer and several others?
Well, I think there's a misunderstanding to some degree. The Journey Museum owns none of the collections.
I know they don't own.
We are, as far as we know, we are the only museum in the country that does not own collections. They belong to four organizations, the Minnaloosa Pioneer, the South Dakota State Historical Society, the South Dakota School of Mines, and the Sioux Indian Museum. The Sioux Indian Museum is owned by the Department of Interior, and the others are obviously owned by those particular individuals. The one thing, asset that the museum does have is we received a NASA grant two years ago for almost $500,000, and part of that grant was to purchase a planetarium, a mobile planetarium. Over the last two years, we have reached almost 20,000 school kids in the region. We are already 100% booked for the coming year, and it's an outreach program that has been wonderful. Last, two weeks ago, we trained 21 teachers that were in and got certification as a result of that, so that's been very good from that standpoint.
The other part of the question is, of these collections, whether you own them or not, they're under your care, aren't they?
No, they're not. We, we, you know, we keep the building, well, we maintain the building. We work with each of those collections to make sure that everything is maintained. Part of maintaining the building is the necessity to have a, you know, humidity-controlled facility, which we have to have to keep it stuff, and that's a pretty expensive part of the operation of the facility from that standpoint. Because there's no doubt in my mind that if we did not work on that working agreement with the Secretary, with the, on the Sioux Indian, Sioux Indian Museum portion, which is owned by the Secretary of the Interior, I'll be honest with you, Smithsonian Institution has eyes on that collection. And they would love to have it because it is the biggest and largest single collection of Sioux Indian artifacts in, in the world. But yeah, we do work with them, Jerry, on that from that standpoint, so it is one of the things. Our operations and our salaries and expenses go toward those sorts of things of supporting all four of those organizations. And we have been without a Director of the Sioux Indian Museum for the last year and a half. And we have worked very closely with the Indian Art and Crafts Board in Washington and actually acting almost as the curator for Sioux Indian Museum for the last year and a half.
So are these collections in the Journey Museum and protected by the environment of the Journey Museum?
Yes, they are.
Okay. If they were not, what would happen to them?
I have no doubt, as I said, that I think if we, because of the, the age of the Sioux Indian artifacts, the Secretary of Interior will probably, the Indian Arts and Crafts Board would, would, you know, indicate that they should move it out of there. We have a good working relationship with the Minnaloosa. A lot of those are old artifacts dating back to the early days of Rapid City. And of course, you have to have them, you know, in a, in a controlled environment from that standpoint. If the building were not maintained in such a manner, that would be problematic as well. Not so much for fossils, in other things from the South Dakota Historical Society. But one of the other things is, you know, School of Mines just built a new Museum of Geology. We have a great partnership with them, but there's nothing, you know, they could just as soon take their things and, and move them to the new building out on the, on the campus. We hope that won't happen because I think with our working relationship, we actually hope to expand what they have available in the museum in future years.
Okay, Mr. Sasso.
What is the percentage of your current budget that is from the city?
The city, we get $325,000 a year. Our budget is about just under $1 million for this year. So it's 32.5%, approximately, approximately 33%. Of that 325,000, about 180,000, 190,000 goes directly to the operation maintenance of the building. And the other goes to programmatic support and management activity. Our estimate for next year will be that it's going to be slightly over $200,000 for the operation of the building. And our, our, our guesstimate at this point is about $100,000 will go toward programmatic stuff. So it's going to be pretty, about 120,000 will go to programmatic and management activities.
Thank you.
If I might, from that standpoint, when the, when the, when the appropriation was first made in 2002, it was $325,000. At that time, the Journey Museum's budget was slightly over $500,000, and now it's $1 million. And the appropriation the city has given is exactly the same. The only change is that the actual cost of keeping the building has increased from 125,000 to just about $200,000.
Mr. Nordstrom.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for the presentation, Chuck. Just a point of information on a couple of points for the Council is that we are in the infancy of developing a marketing committee, and we're doing an outreach and trying to sell the Journey Museum. And, and so again, just to emphasize, we're in the infancy of that, and so we're trying to expand on that, look for new, new marketing tools to come up next year. And then also in the membership side, we, that's another one that's basically getting started up by a board member as well. Just to reiterate, the Marketing Committee is started up by a board member, so we're getting active Mark Board members, so that's great to see. And just, just a point of information here for, for the folks that are not familiar with the Journey Museum is that we are trying, part of that outreach program is to use or ask people within the community to allow us to use a family photo that, that has been placed in the Journey Museum to show the community who is involved with the Journey Museum. And I'd like to acknowledge the Mayor for doing his part of putting the family photo up there. And no, Sam, it's not used for a dartboard either, so, so, we thank you for that. Richie, I think the big thing from that standpoint, if I may, is the fact is in, when, when the museum was originally constructed, it was meant to be a tourist attraction, quite frankly. And it was undercapitalized to start with, and so it's been a tread-water kind of situation from that standpoint. The original consultant said that 3 million people went to Mount Rushmore, so 10% come to the Journey Museum would take care of it. Well, I would challenge you to ask anybody who's been the superintendent at, at Mount Rushmore if they've ever come close to seeing 3 million visitors in one year there. But anyway, that being said, our original marketing, we, we spend a lot of time working with CVB in trying to promote it to the tourist industry. But one of our big focuses now, we need the community support. And quite frankly, there are a lot of detractors out there who you've heard the stories and you will continue to hear the stories. Part of that marketing plan that we're putting together as part of our strategic plan is the outreach to the region. The Journey Museum is a regional museum. It's not a Rapid City museum. It's a regional museum. And our whole hope is that we will someday be able to get that thing that said that people are proud of this museum from that standpoint. There are those who are, but those, there are those who think it's a big drain on the city budget. And quite frankly, if, if the appropriation is not made to the Journey Museum, it would be hard-pressed to continue to operate the way it does.
Continue, Mr. Nordstrom.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to reemphasize, the part of the, the investment that the city is doing with the Journey Museum, the $325,000, has been pretty consistent, according to the document I have in front of me, since 2007, and I'm sure it's been prior to that.
Since 2002, it's been $325,000.
Thank you. The, the major point that we want to try to emphasize on this is that it's remained at $325,000, which translates into the, the amount of money, buying power has been diminished over that same time, so what we got for 325, back then versus now, is not the same.
Well, I think, and, and one of the things, to that degree, is also very important, because you can debate what that number might be, I've seen anything ranging between 30% to 40%, 45% in lost buying power. Our biggest issue is our cost of utilities, and the cost that's taken place as a result. The recent electrical rate increase was one of the things, one of the things that's very good. We have a management agreement that went into effect in, in May, worked hard with the mayor and with Pauline to come up with this, and the Journey Museum had never had a management agreement with the city prior to that time. And one of the things that's going to take place, is that we will still fall under the city's umbrella, because it is a city building, for insurance and for electricity, because of the reduced rate that the city gets, as same for the insurance of the building, from that standpoint, and that is one thing that will help out. But under the management agreement beginning in the coming year, in 2013, we will handle all of the other costs. So in effect, we are actually incurring a small increase in our costs, but hopefully we're saving Pauline and her staff some headaches, from that standpoint, because before what had happened was, the, the, the bills would come to the city, they'd come to us, and we'd send them, or they'd come to the Journey Museum, we'd then send them to the finance office. Finance office would then write the check, and they'd let us know what would happen, and so it was, you know, kind of a bureaucratic tie-up, from that standpoint. And in future years, what will happen, except for electricity and, electricity and, as insurance, they will all come to us, we will make, we will make those payments from now on. So it will save time, our people will handle that work, and it will save some time for the, for the city finance office, from that standpoint. And I think it's going to be a good working relationship, from that perspective.
Okay, are you done, Mr. Nordstrom?
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Sasso?
One, one of the concerns, I think, just, I think everybody to be aware, the building is getting older, and I know, actually, this year, we've crested a third of a million, because we did have to, the city owns the building, and did have to incorporate, I think it was the air conditioning or unit, so, do you?
Two, we have four compressors, and two failed. That's, it's kind of a redundancy program, the two will work the, the situation, but if we were to lose another, the interior environment of the building would, would denigrate considerably, and that could cause us significant problems, from that standpoint. And we did request money from the CIP. There is also money for next year in the CIP to caulk the building, probably the worst-designed building I've, well, I wouldn't, that I've ever seen, but it's a very poorly-designed building, with the flat roof, the seams that run up and down the side of the building, those need to be done about every eight years, or you have significant deterioration of the interior walls of, of the building. So that is one of the things that's also in the question, from that standpoint. And that's over and above the, the money that's in the appropriation for the operation and maintenance of the building.
One of the things, and I'll, I'll throw my two cents in, and I did, did throw, throw it in at one of the marketing meetings, the marketing of the journey, actually, with what, what you said regarding the Sioux collection, it's not on the website, and with some of the information that actually was, it's good that you're collecting the marketing data, but knowing with that data that you have, less than 10% of the people are reaching you through your website.
Right, and we're trying to improve that. We, we know that, and that's one of the things, as, as things change, and quite frankly, we've always wanted to have somebody on staff to do marketing, and we can't afford the position, quite frankly, and as a result, as the members on this council who have been members of our board can attest, that's been a discussion point, since I've been on the board the last five years, and it's not going to change. We need someone to do that. We, we have a couple of people on staff who spend some time doing it, but as Richie indicated, one of our board members has taken it upon herself, and that's not really the role of board members, quite frankly, to do what she's doing, and some of the other members on our board as well, and hopefully we'll be able to, to proceed forward on that. It's not a, we're, we're, we're not a static board, by any sense of the imagination. In fact, I've been on the board for, I'll be honest with you, I've been a resident of Rapid City for less than six years, and one of the things I did, I joined that board, so I could connect with Rapid City. And the change in the membership of the board over the last few years, we've got some very active people who are willing to put forth a lot of volunteer time to make things work. Are we there? Not by any sense of the imagination. We've got a hell of a lot of work we need to do yet, but I think that the steps have been made. I think the meetings we've had with the creation of the management agreement, we're working with the mayor now on an MOU about governance package, our strategic plan that we worked with the Cheeseman Center on to build, is giving us those things to move us forward, but like I said, this is a community operation, it can't be done just by the people who volunteered to be on the board, and the, and the people who are there. We need, you know, we got, we, we need to figure out a way to reach out to those other people that are out there, so that it is, is embraced by the community, and, and quite frankly, we're not there. And I hope, in my lifetime, we get there, but I'm not really confident, quite frankly, with you, because there are still people out there who believe that we're, that the museum is a drain on the city's resources.
I do believe that if, if you were marketing the Native American and the Pioneer aspects heavier, much heavier, that I think then your, your, your ability to pull from beyond this region will, will be much better.
Well, that's true. We're, we're actually, we've had some discussions, quite frankly, with Gerard Baker, now that he's taken over as the, you know, kind of the temporary superintendent of the South Unit down on the reservation, and he wants to work with us on some issues to try to build that, strengthen up that, that sort of situation. So that's one step that we're taking in that direction, but I don't, we're, we're also taking, through some of our soliciting of the bus tour kind of things, we've done some outreach, actually, into Europe, because the Europeans are very interested in the Western culture of this, of this country, and a lot of people that come, and it's interesting, the last couple of years, the number of those folks that we have, we've, we've received at the museum, and their interest level is very high, and we hope to grow that.
And you also have an excellent children's program.
It's wonderful. In fact, if I may, just to give a couple of words on the NASA grant, this is a wonderful grant. It expires at the end of next school year, and we are working with NASA to hopefully extend it, but quite frankly, their budget situation, with Congress doing a continuing resolution until the 1st of next year, they're not sure what they're going to see either, and, you know, the wheels of federal government don't turn real quickly, so, one of the things that we, we won't, you know, we won't prepare our 2013 budget until we see where our funding resources are going to be, but quite frankly, a big portion of, if we do not continue the grant, we're seeking a couple of other grants to continue this program for teacher education and student education, because we don't want this program to, to disappear. I think it's very good, tied with the other education programs with the children we've got going on, I think we're, we're, that's our audience, quite frankly.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Lewis?
Thank you. Well, just want to say, like, I understand that there's a lot of concerns about the amount of money that's appropriated to the Journey every year, however, I think it's one of those things, that not everything in our community can make money, and we do for quality-of-life purposes. I ran on that issue, I think it's very important, you know, not everybody's in art, but not everybody's in softball, you know? It's just that everybody's got to have, pick and choose, can't pick and choose, but I think that this is a city building, we're going to have to maintain it one way or the other. I, I want to tell you that I've, I've recently started attending there with my family, going to Family Day, which is something I think you should try to promote as much as possible, but it's, it was 107 degrees out last time I went, so it was quite nice to get out and...
Family Day's a lot better in the wintertime, when we're indoors, so it's...
Yeah, well, and it'll be that way as well, but I just want to kind of give it a plug, because anybody that's got children out there, it was a great little time to get out, and, you know, we watched a video on bicycles, and we had some crafts that we did, and it was just really, I was really, really impressed with it. My kids liked to go through the museum itself, they like exploring, they're that age where they can start to explore a little more, and, and educate themselves. I just think that, you know, we need to make sure we, we keep, we keep on the track of making, I understand that, you know, we need to be fiscally conservative, this time that we live in, but the world is, you know, passing on us by, by pretty fast, here in Rapid City, if we don't keep up, we need to stay on the cutting edge of being one of those places everybody wants to live, and I think this is just another part of the, the puzzle that goes together with us, and I, like I said, I realize people are concerned about the expenditures, but we're going to have to maintain that building if it's there or not, if you're there or not, something's going to have to be there, so, I want to tell you, I appreciate the work you're doing. I'm going to try to take my family in there more often, it's nice, there's nothing that they can really break too much, so...
We hope not. But I, I will say, our staff, because we don't have artifacts that we're responsible for, one of the things we try to do is the outreach, and one of the decisions the board made a few years ago was that education was really our role, and we would step out, and in making the move toward the children's programs we've done, and our staff, which is limited as it is, really devotes a lot of their time to those, those sorts of efforts.
Well, you'll, you'll hear that from me, on other issues this evening, but I, I just appreciate the fact that you, while working with families, that's a very important part of our, our society and our community, I think it's our duty, and so, thank you very much for that part.
You.
Okay, anyone else with questions for the Journey? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you all, thanks, Mike.
And let's see, the Dahl. If you want to introduce yourself, and does anyone have questions?
Hi, my name is Deborah Gangloff, and I am the Executive Director of the Rapid City Arts Council at the Dahl.
Okay, thanks, Deborah. Mr. Laurenti?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I kind of have basically the same questions, and I, I know some of the answers, but I want to hear you answer them anyway, but, the Dahl Fine Arts Center, how long has it been in existence?
We started in, Ruth, 1974, 1974.
Does the Dahl Fine Arts Center have an endowment?
Yes, we do, we have a small endowment of about $150,000.
When did that, when was that endowment instituted, or brought about?
It began in 1988, approximately.
That's all I have, thank you, Chair. Thank you.
Mr. Sasso?
What, thank you, what percentage of your budget is from the city?
It's about a third. We, I distributed a handout earlier, our entire budget is $711,444. Of this, $210,948 comes from the city.
Thank you.
And, and may I say that the, the money that comes from the city is spent 100% on the building, maintaining the building. The programs that we do are, are funded by, by other means. The remaining $500,496 of our budget comes from, excuse me, we raise on our own.
Mr. Lewis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hey, Deborah, nice to see you again.
Yeah, thanks.
I recently was appointed to your, to your board?
And Chad?
Yes, ma'am.
Saturday is Family Art Adventure Day at the Dahl.
Okay.
Free, I hope you come.
Absolutely, I try our best. I just want to let you know, I, I recently had the pleasure of being appointed to your board, wasn't able to make the first meeting, unfortunately, but I did take the time to have a tour of your, your facility, sit down and discuss with you a couple of things that I've, about your, your building, and could you please explain to us maybe like the HVAC system, and probably some of the issues there you're having, and that's maybe a part of the maintenance problem?
Yeah, we've had two problems, two major problems with the building this year. We have, our HVAC system was not operating properly, and our freight elevator was not operating properly, and we have hired a new facilities manager, who is here tonight, Duskin Low, and he has not only made great efforts at attempting to fix it, he's following the line of problems down to get to the bottom of the problem. So we're happy to say that today, we think we may have the HVAC system under control, and the freight elevator is also working, so yay.
Excellent. Also, if we talked a little bit about the marketing, we talked, you were going to start doing some marketing as well, and a little bit about that, if you kind of educate the rest of the crowd?
Yes, we've, we've been working, we've been operating at a deficit for a few years, and we've, we've recently expanded. We were still in construction mode for funding, and how we, and how we spent our money, so we're now transitioning to sustainable operations, and everyone knows that marketing is incredibly important, because we do wonderful things at the Dahl, but if people don't know about it, they won't come, and so, marketing is a, is an important piece. When you're operating at a deficit, marketing dollars are easy to put off. It's short-term smart, long-term stupid, but if you don't have the money, where do you get it? So, we're spending this year, we started this year with a significant deficit, we've been chipping away at it every month, this is an operational deficit, we're chipping away at it every month, and we are encouraged to think that by next year, we'll be in the black. And we have two grants pending, one, both are heavy educational programs, and one is a significant marketing program, so if we are funded, we will get to an important marketing program earlier, but we have to do marketing regardless, so it is in our plan, certainly, to do that.
And part of that marketing is with the Performing Arts Center, is that correct? You were going to...
Yes, we'd like to collaborate. If you look at what's happening with our city, with Main Street Square, which has really been such a, a game-changer for Rapid City, the Dahl, and the new Performing Arts Center, and the library, form a cultural campus that's less than five minutes away, and so we are looking at collaboration to, if you look at the 2020 strategic goals that the city has laid out, and I think that, that this cultural campus can feed into and support every one of those goals. It improves the quality of life, it, it makes, it gives Rapid City another reason for people to move here, for children to stay here, and we're very excited about the potential, about the future, what this means.
And you presented a few numbers to us earlier about economic development, or economic impact of, of the arts, and are you comfortable discussing any of that at this point, or would you rather, rather not? I don't, I'm not going to put you on the clock.
Bring them to me, and I don't have the memories.
That's okay, that's no problem, but it does have a pretty significant economic impact in our city as well, I think people need to understand that. It's not just going and looking at pretty paintings, it actually brings people here to do things. Once again, children, big, big resource for children, families, so if anybody's got kids that need to learn some more about the arts, I encourage you to enroll them, and down there at the, it's very inexpensive, and it's a good way to spend your time.
And we have scholarships, that's what most of our endowment revenue goes to, are scholarships for, for students who couldn't afford otherwise.
Thank you.
And, and may I say, that someone in the audience asked that, since you bring up the impact of the arts and so on, someone in the audience said, well, people who are here who support the arts should stand up, so if you're here to support the arts, stand up, please. Oh, Jerry, yay. I'd also like to invite all of you, if you have not been to the Dahl, please come by, and I would love to give you a tour and show you what we have to offer, and here, I have some handouts.
Thank you.
You should try to be a little more green.
These are on our website.
Okay, Mr. Nordstrom?
Thank you, Madam Chair, very briefly, have you folks gotten hooked up with the, since you're talking about the campus, that you're looking at for the downtown area, have you got hooked up with the Destination Rapid City and part of the wayfinding group as well? Great.
Yes, and we're very excited about that.
So am I, very much so, yep. Thank you, you're on the floor.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Okay, let's see, emergency management? Hey, you want to introduce yourself?
Good evening, my name is Dustin Willett, I'm the Director of Emergency Management for Rapid City and Pennington County, be happy to stand for any questions you may have.
Hey.
May I?
You bet.
Dustin, if I, I almost took you thunder, but, and you can explain a little further, you know, prior days, the county emergency management was a person brought in, and there's a emergency operations board, which I and Don Holloway, the county commissioner, sit with, the chief, chief, and sheriff, and so forth, and they've come to a little different arrangement, and they're using a, at this time, a Rapid City fireman, who's Dustin, as the emergency operations director, future days, it could be a police officer and so forth, the idea of having someone that's trained, experienced with responding and all that, it's a wonderful new approach, to be prepared for that thing, we hope never happens. It's a little change, and it's... forth. The idea of having someone that's trained, experienced with responding and all that. It's a wonderful new approach to be prepared for that thing we hope never happens. It's a little change and it's something new that you may or may not be aware of, but their job is to help us if things go wrong. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay, well, thank you for all you do and hopefully we won't see you when things go wrong.
Hopefully.
Hopefully it won't be going wrong. Yeah, hope we keep, hope we keep you bored. Thank you. Uh, Wavy?
Hi, thank you for coming tonight. Then, you wanna introduce yourselves?
I'm Mary Corbim. I'm the Executive Director.
Gordon Decker, Board Chairman.
Okay, any questions for Wavy? We know y'all do an outperform, provide an outstanding service for us. Uh, Mr. Wright?
If you would, just share some, if you've got them, statistics of how you've helped intervene and protect both women and, and children, spouses. You know, I mean, it's been very successful, but maybe some of us don't know all that about it. So, if you, just a minute, please.
Okay. Um, last year, we served two thousand one hundred and eighty-seven victims of domestic violence and that does include men, too. We can serve men, they just can't stay in the shelter. We had five hundred and sixty-five individuals in shelter and over three hundred of them were children. We helped with a hundred and one protection orders, provided, um, over thirty thousand services that include emergency financial. It might be help with transportation, food, personal care items. Um, we provide emotional support, court and legal advocacy. We respond to the emergency room for both sexual assault and domestic violence victims twenty-four hours a day, um, all year long. We have twenty-four hour, um, staffed, secure shelter, two staff on at all times.
You're doing a great job.
Very impressive. Mr. Laurenti.
I just really have a comment because I saw it on the list and I just wanted to thank you guys for what you do for our community. It's a critical service that would be tons more expensive if government was running it, no doubt about it. So, we greatly appreciate what you do for our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Lewis?
I'm just gonna echo the same comments, even though, even though it's echoing, I don't think everybody gets tired of hearing they're doing a good job. And, uh, information I have from the police force, uh, they, they think you're absolutely a vital asset to their, what they do. So, thank you very much.
We have a very close relationship with law enforcement and we need them as much as they need us.
Well, that's good. Win wins. Mr. Wright?
I just wanna say that if you sometimes are blessed with more than you need, take by a little gift to them. I know that my wife collects all these shower things from every motel, hotel we go to and they have a bag I take to there about once a year and things like that, or teddy bears for the children. I think you need, can use all that stuff, right? So, in your heart, if we can do something, let's do it as a community and as council. Thank you. Cell phones, yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you so much for the good work that you do and thanks for coming this evening.
Thanks.
Lifeways.
Before we get started with them, I want you to know that I did check into their two thousand and eleven budget allocation and there was a miscommunication, I believe, as to why it did not get invoiced. The school thought that Lifeways was going to invoice it and Lifeways thought the school was going to invoice it and so, I now have an invoice. So, I just wanna let you know that we did look into it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I'm Dee Glasgow. Um, I'm the Assistant Executive Director with Lifeways Incorporated. Uh, we've been around since two thousand and two. We've, uh, been fortunate enough to have city funding every year since then. So, I'll be glad to answer any questions. I did pass out a, a small survey of, we have to complete a survey every year. I have to tell you, that's just a very small portion. If any of you would really like to see the whole survey, it's a hundred and ten pages and I'll be glad to, I will be dropping one of these off at the mayor.
Okay, any questions?
Were they involved with the alcohol issue down at the School of Mines?
No, no. We work in the, uh, secondary schools and high schools. We do not do, um, the college.
Well, I think any of the work that you do ends up saving the city money with, uh, future problems with, uh, detox and with crime and all, and improve the quality of life for everyone, especially the people that potentially could suffer from these problems.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor?
Thank you, Bonnie. Dee, I'd like to just mention, too, we sure appreciate your leadership on the synthetic drug issue and helping to raise awareness, including your sponsorship of the, the forum earlier this year at the Journey Museum. I think a lot of eyes have been opened regarding that issue. So, thanks again for your involvement in that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, and I, last on our list and before we take a break is the Ellsworth Air Force Base Task Force. And I just want you to know, even though there, we're not out here, probably the rest of us are in front of a TV in the break room and you can hear and listen back there. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mayor, council members. I'm Chris Lee, Chairman of the Ellsworth Task Force, uh, whose mission is to sustain and maintain Ellsworth Air Force Base for the sake of our national defense and our community. And I stand ready to ask any, or answer any questions you may have.
Okay, Mr. Lewis?
I'm not sure if this falls under your, your mission or not, but, uh, back in the eighties, my mother was on a board that was brought to, when new personnel were brought into the base, they always went through a process like how to buy a house or how to, like she was a realtor, so that was what she did. And they had different experts from different, um, you know, parts of the community that met with them. Do they still do something like that?
They actually, that's part of the, uh, Chamber of Commerce mission, the Military Affairs Committee, yes.
What do I know, I'm a new guy around here. But I just wanna make sure that's something I think is pretty vital. I really appreciate what you're doing, obviously, and, you know, the base is a vital part of our community, so.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Wright?
I know that, uh, before Congress, which is wrestling with their own budget, uh, I believe, I can't remember the exact term, but they're talking about the third reduction, one-third reduction in spending and the Defense Department, as it stands right now, is going to share in that. And there's, I think we need to be, as a community, be very aware that if the Department of Defense goes through that drastic of a reduction in funding, it will impact the Air Force, it will impact bases, and we need to be prepared to, uh, help Ellsworth defend it. I think, uh, it's just something to be aware of. And we may have to crank up in a few months. Thank you.
Chairman Wright, that's, uh, just to echo that point, four hundred and eighty-seven billion dollars is the number that they're looking at reducing.
The three bases in the Dakotas, one might go.
Correct.
Okay, anyone else have questions? Thank you so much for waiting for your turn and coming to, um, answer any questions we might have. Appreciate it.
And I appreciate the partnership. We certainly couldn't do it without the city, Rapid City. Uh, Ellsworth contributes a million dollars a day. I think it's a great return on the investment. So, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're gonna take a break now that, uh, our Public Works Director has arrived. We'll take a ten-minute break. Thank you. If you want to consider switching that around. Okay, we had a wonderful break. Some people are still having a wonderful break. But, we have our Public Works Director here. And, um, before we begin, does any, uh, before Terry, um, gives us some facts, does anyone have a question for him? Okay, Terry, you wanna enlighten us about your, uh, department, the highlights?
Sure. I, I wanna have a presentation, uh, just real quick. The general fund, general fund portion of Public Works includes, uh, engineering. Uh, engineering includes, uh, traffic engineering, street lighting and engineering administration services. Um, it includes the transit division, which obviously is our rapid ride and dial-a-ride. It includes our street division, which includes, um, snow removal, street sweeping, um, street maintenance and equipment maintenance. And the enterprise fund section of it includes water, water reclamation and landfill, solid waste, excuse me. So, um, got all but one of my division managers here. If there's any questions that come up that I can't answer, hopefully they can. Um, and I guess at this point, I'm certainly here to answer any questions you have.
Okay, Mr. Laurenti?
I have a question, Cherry, and this may be one of your staff, because I can't remember who exactly did the presentation for us last year. But, this had to do with the trolley service that we had a, a, uh, presentation on last year and they talked about how the ridership would have easily been handled by one of the trolleys and that, I can't remember the financial shape of that service and where we were at, but I wanted to find out where we were at, uh, for two thousand and twelve so far. I know two thousand and eleven, I'm, if I'm remembering right, maybe some of my colleagues, colleagues can help here, but that we operated at a loss in two thousand and eleven, but I'm not sure. So, and then I had some questions about the response on the questions that are on the handout that we received, so.
Yeah, just so you know, we actually did go from two trolleys down to one trolley. So, we're operating on the hour instead of every half an hour. Um, and it's worked out really well, actually. We're, we're seeing a, a lot of times, uh, maxed-out trolley service, actually. So, um, don't think we're at a point where we wanna add that second one yet, to be honest with you. Um, but we're very happy with the way it's worked out going down to the one trolley. Um, I don't have the specific numbers off the top of my head, to be honest with you, but I, and talking with Rich, we're very happy with the way that has materialized this summer.
Okay. Um, if we could, um, 'cause I know Monday night really will be, I'd like to know, and I, I'm hoping my colleagues would like to know where we're, where we finished in two thousand and eleven. I don't know if that's a separate line item and if it's not, I'm gonna be asking for that for the two thousand and thirteen budget. But, um, and I'd like to know where we're at in two thousand and twelve so far.
So, you, you want, just so I'm clear, you would like to know, um, financially where we are, positive, negative from two thousand and eleven, and also where we're sitting in two thousand and twelve, on the trolley portion.
On the trolley portion, yep. And, and can you tell me, is that a separate line item on the budget? Is not. So, I'd like to, uh, well, I'm not gonna make a motion, but I will do that Monday night.
No, it's.
Would we not really have the full picture, though, until September for what, August for the two thousand and twelve?
Yeah, no, and I'm asking just for where, kind of where we're at so far, operating expenses to, uh, revenues, if we're keeping track of that. Okay. And, and I know he does. It's not a separate line item in the budget, um, but I knew they do, they do track those expenditures separately, so.
And I'm just asking, I'm gonna ask for that Monday night, you know, Terry, really just because we've got these other functions that are, uh, you know, the city government's involved in, like the Meadowbrook Golf Course, which is another item that I asked for, a separate line item, just so that we can let the citizens know how those things are, because I've had many citizens ask me about those things.
Yeah.
And their concerns there. So, thank you very much.
Uh, anyone else have a question? Uh, did you have a specific question about Meadowbrook or did you get your answer that you?
I am extremely happy right now.
Fantastic.
I wouldn't.
Oh, that's right. Sorry. I always think Public Works does everything in the city for some reason.
Oh, thank God, I didn't have to deal with that.
Cause they, their list goes on and on and sometimes I think it, I know, it goes on and on, so.
I'm doing fine, actually. Thank you.
Okay. Um, anyone else? We've got a whole, uh, top caliber people here to answer questions. Uh, Mr. Sasso?
You don't have to feel like you really have to ask me questions.
I, I, I just, I figure, you know, I, I, you know, it's a large chunk of what we do. I figure, gotta at least ask you.
And I know you allocated me an hour, but you don't have to spend the whole time.
Okay, okay. Um, let's see, could you give us a breakdown of every single aspect of Public Works? Uh, no.
Absolutely.
Okay, only kidding. Um, but.
We're pulling shots now, so.
Uh, yeah, good, good point there. Uh, wait, no, it's gotta go through second reading, I think. So, we're, I'm still okay. Um, how, how do you feel as far as, with the budget, with, uh, looking at, um, the, uh, I know we've got some bonding with the point one-six and so forth. How are you feeling about where we're sitting now and, now in, in the foreseeable future?
Good question, Ron. Um, you know, in the, let's talk about general fund stuff first. Um, general fund divisions, uh, I think we're doing really good. Um, in this particular budget, uh, we did squeeze in, I believe it's six large pieces of equipment in the street division. Uh, a sweeper, an end dump, and I think four plows. Um, keep in mind, they're all, they're programmed in as a, as a loan purchase, so they're not full-out purchase. Um, it's over a million dollars' worth of equipment. So, um, that's a good step forward, uh, for snow removal and, um, turning our fleet over, our street sweepers. So, we're happy with that. Uh, and from the enterprise standpoint, I know, obviously, they're self, self-sufficient enterprises. Um, and I, I think we're in pretty good shape on those. I, I mean, overall, I'm, I'm very happy with where we're sitting right now. Now, if you wanna talk about street infrastructure, uh, maybe you need to schedule another night for that. Um, I'll tell you this, there's been a lot of number, a lot of different numbers that have been tossed around in emails from various council people. Um, and if we wanna talk streets and drainage, realistically, if you look at the four hundred or so miles of, of, uh, street system that we have in Rapid City, wanna look at, um, maintaining them and reconstructing them on a, probably about a forty-five-year life cycle, we should be spending about four million dollars a year for our rehabilitation projects. That'd be like our chip seals, crack sealing and our simple overlay projects. We could spend about twenty million dollars on reconstruction, so about twenty-four million. Uh, we're sitting at around twelve million right now. Um, obviously, you're not gonna get to twenty-four million, um, in the near future. That's not necessarily a reasonable, um, number to toss out there. I, I mentioned before and I'll mention again, I think one positive step forward will be a drainage utility if we can get to that point. Um, but, you know, from a number standpoint, that's where we're at.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. One of the concerns that we do have is beca, and I am feeling more comfortable, cause we are starting to take, uh, steps to address these serious issues, like looking. are starting to take steps to address these serious issues, like looking at the drainage utility fee, and trying to get money into the pots where we need the money, and taking money out of the pots where we don't need money. You know, we're looking at lots of things to see so that we better serve the citizens. And it's very, and I do think we're headed in the right direction. I mean, it'd be great if we could wave our magic wand and have more money to do the infrastructure repairs and maintenance that we want to do, but I'm feeling a lot better that we are trending in the right direction. And hopefully, this year, as we work our way through council, that we'll have, find new solutions to our problems, because it's, it takes a while to find out how big the problems are, and I'm glad that our staff enlighten us on that, so that we do know. And, oh, Mr. Nordstrom.
Come on, all right. Rich Segan is here now. So we got any follow-up questions on the, on the trolley and all of that from the transit?
I was going to say, we might be able to get your answer yet tonight, so.
But I just want to reemphasize to the group here that as far as ramping up on the street repair, reconstruction, drainage, and all of that, that hopefully, we can continue doing that direction, because it's sorely needed out there. Bridge repairs, inspections, and so on like that, keep up with that. I just get the sense, and Mr. Tech gave me the idea, that we're kind of slipping behind or backsliding on it, and I fully agree with that, because of, just in my neighborhood, what I've been looking at is the streets are in disrepair and bad shape. And I appreciate the scorecard that you folks came up with, grading all the streets within the city and how they are scored and all of that. So, thank you very much for that. And then part of that is also in the CIP funding. And let's not give up on that either. Keep that moving forward, and if we have to, if we can, I'm still advocating that we need to ramp up as well. Thank you, Terry.
You're on the hot seat here, Rich.
Alderman Laurenti had some specific questions on the trolley, actually, and you may not have these numbers off the top of your head, Rich, so I apologize. But I think your question was, we're, from a 2011 standpoint, financially, how did it, because I assume we track those revenues and expenditures separately, how did that one turn out, positive or negative, versus what we're doing in 2012, where we went down to one trolley? Well, at this point, you know, season will be wrapped up the end of August, and as we do every year, we have an end-of-the-season report that will provide all the passengers, passenger counts, all the expenses, the revenues we took in, and we can break, we break it down by month, and we also break it down by passenger per hour that we transported. It'll be significantly cheaper to provide the service this year, obviously, with one vehicle versus two, plus we cut out the three holidays that we used to provide service on. We don't do Labor Day anymore, Memorial Day, or Fourth of July, because quite frankly, they were very underutilized, and it didn't make sense to operate then. And in addition to that, we have one less service hour per day, too. We're operating seven hours a day, as opposed to last year, we operated, you know, 16 with two vehicles, which would have been eight per vehicle, so. But I can give you some solid numbers where we're at to date, if you'd like them by Monday night, if you'd like that.
Yeah, that would be great, and I didn't need them tonight. I was just wanting to know where we were at, finished in 2011, and where we're sitting in 2012. And then I had one last question, I guess, and it might be more of a comment, but maybe it will turn into a question as I'm stating it, because the response that we had was, we need a minimum of one backup trolley, which makes sense at this point. And then the part that was a little troubling to me, without knowing where we're at, because I know in 2011, it wasn't an extremely lucrative situation, if I remember the presentation, but the addition of more trolleys on the existing route is, I don't know where that's coming from, that statement, who made that? I don't know. But that's something else I want to address as well, possibly Monday night, at least the answer that we have that was provided to us. There was some leading statement about adding more trolleys on the existing route.
I'm confused.
So am I.
Well, and I probably, I probably wrote the response, if you want to read it back to me, I can probably clarify that.
It says, "We need a minimum of one backup trolley and foresee the addition of more trolleys on the existing route or additional routes in the future again."
I think the concern would be that if, if the passenger count picks up, and we see a time in the future where we want to add a second trolley back in, or if there's peak, maybe peak periods throughout the summer, peak days, we'd want to add another trolley in or something, that'd be nice to have that other one. We always want to have one for backup, because sure enough, one's going to break down, it seems like, so. I think that was thought there. On the flip side, and I put words in your mouth, but I think the question was whether that was a trolley or something we could surplus and utilize those funds somewhere else. And Rich can probably address some of the pitfalls we would have with doing that, I think.
Yeah, I understand the need for a backup, so, I mean, he doesn't have to answer that question, because I know we, what, we have the two now, am I correct?
We have three total, one in peak service, right. But I'm saying, even if we decided, we definitely don't need that third one, I'd like, Rich, just to touch base on that a little bit, because there's definitely some pitfalls with getting rid of something like that. The way the regulation reads is that unless those vehicles have reached their maximum useful life, which they haven't, we would have to turn back 83% of the cost of the vehicle to the feds. The local share was paid for by a private businessman. All three of them are purchased, the local share, where there are no city dollars involved in the capital end of the thing. So, but if we retired those out now, and let's say they were worth $50,000, we have to give 83% of that back to the feds, so. Yeah, we really don't gain much, unfortunately.
Right. Okay, great, and I'm looking forward to seeing those numbers.
Okay, I'll have you something Monday night, then, and I'll have it attached to Terry, if you'd like.
Do you think you would have them, so you could send them before the meeting, so we have them, so?
We'll send them out Monday. Absolutely. Yeah, I'll get them out to you Monday, for sure.
Okay, great.
Possibly even tomorrow.
Okay, let's see, we've got hands going everywhere.
Thank you.
Mr. Lewis?
Yeah, he was raising his hand for me.
Oh.
When you have the.
Trolley's down for the rush games. Who pays for that?
We don't have them down there. That's their own trolley. They purchased that from the city of Deadwood.
Oh, okay.
And that's the Civic Center's trolley.
Oh, cool.
And federal interest is gone in that vehicle. They can use that any way they want to. They don't use any federal operating money, and the federal interest in the capital share is gone, and they purchased that directly from the city of Deadwood, so.
Okay. The only reason I was asking that, and this is not a derogatory statement, somebody just said to me one night, that it's awful nice seeing the trolleys full for a change, because they definitely, and I actually thought that was a city trolley, so, thank you, I appreciate that.
Mr. Clayton?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And Rich, I don't, I don't have any, does anybody want to talk to Rich, because if so? Is that okay if he goes first?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Clayton.
Okay, this question's kind of related to some conversation Rich and I and the mayor had one day, but I see you have repairs and maintenance. Indulge me, is that for vehicles? Is that everything for Public Works? What vehicles, is that all your vehicles under Public Works?
Generally be the repairs on the vehicles, I believe.
Yours isn't included in the system, okay. At what point, and I know that we've, this is not for this budget, but I'm just thinking, are we getting to a point where we're going to try to maybe push for a general motor pool? And I understand Rich's vehicles can't be operated on under there because of the federal money, probably. Does that make sense, my question?
Actually, yes. That is something that I think should be looked at heavily, and there certainly could even be some federal funding to help pay for an FTE, or maybe more than one FTE to help work on.
Is there a critical number? I mean, is there a number you kind of look at that, you understand where I'm going with that, where I'm questioning, are we at a point now where we need to do it, or is it still, sorry, Rich, I'll let you go.
From our perspective, we're there and beyond. We really need to be doing that. Federal government pick up 80% of the costs of the labor and the parts that we.
Yours would be separate, though, because it's federal money. They can't, they can't touch anything that's not federally funded.
Well, what we couldn't do is, we couldn't cost your mechanic and, you know, take part of their salary out of our portion that had federal involvement in it.
Right, but Terry, for your perspective, you could justify another separate part of that doesn't work on the trolley, which works on, or doesn't work on the rapid transit for your individual vehicles.
And we have staff that work on them. They're actually in the streets division that work on a lot of different vehicles.
But a general motor pool for the entire city, I mean, like, including like the police and everything else?
They work on, they do, they do the police department, and I'll bring, he can enlighten you a little bit on equipment.
Okay, I was just misinformed, I guess. Sorry about that.
Don Brumwoss, Street Superintendent, part of our operation over there is a 305 cost center, which is the equipment maintenance line item, or cost center. We do the equipment maintenance for all of Public Works, and we do the police department. We do some work for Rich when they get balled up on the private side, and we do work for the Civic Center. So we do a lot of equipment maintenance now on over 500 vehicles. We've got eight, nine guys turning wrenches, and an equipment maintenance supervisor that tries to track all that, so.
Okay, I guess they just got confused, because Rich doesn't have his individ, we were talking about you could individually use some more help, is that correct?
Right, Rich has always been separate because of the federal funding and stuff.
Okay, just trying to.
Right now, we'd like to get Rich under our wing, but quite honestly, we don't have the facilities to take care of it.
That's where I was getting, that's, I mean, it's a general area, not necessarily, okay.
I think if we go that route, and I think it's something the city should really look at, I think there would be some cost savings there. I haven't crunched the numbers, but it's going to include, it's not just a staffing issue, it's a facilities issue, too, so.
Okay, facilities, okay, thank you.
There's not enough room down at that Ziggy's building for a couple of days?
Well, if you want to buy the Ziggy's building, we could probably work something out, but.
What is the building that we have, right?
Oh, the pet building. There may, there may be one where Rich's equipment could be worked on, but if you want kind of a combined operation, which would, I think, logistically probably make more sense in the long run, that's kind of a, that's a big picture thing that we, to be honest with you, we just haven't really crunched the numbers on it, so.
Okay, I was just seeking clarification. Do you also work on the mayor mobile?
Which one? Quite honestly, we work on whatever comes through the door, so if PD asks us to work on the, what's considered the mayor's vehicle, then we do, but whatever.
Thank you.
They both won't make it through the door.
Okay, any more questions on the, about transportation or anything before we move on to another area? Okay, Iran?
I think this would be a Rich question. Just, one of the things, I think, a lot of times, when you look at rapid transit, that, you know, it's not designed to necessarily be a moneymaker, but at the same time, curious, ridership on the routes that are going to the mall and so forth, typically, how are they as far as number of passengers?
Well, our ridership, I think, if I look probably over the last two and a half years, we're up well over 30%, and we probably average over 20 passengers per hour on the existing five routes we have now. The most popular destination is Walmart. Our routes in the north and the northeast tend to do real well. The west route isn't as heavily used as the others are. For school kids, it's packed when the school sees, when the school schedule starts, so our numbers are just continually move up. We're looking at doing probably about 420,000 trips this year.
But that's something, too, just keeping the big picture in mind, because a lot of times when we, a lot of times we'll talk about the rapid transit and so forth, and that, you know, wanting it to be self-sufficient at the same time. If a lot of people are going to Walmart and they're spending money, that's our 9% increase in sales tax, so, or at least it contributes, so, thank you.
Sort of as it breaks down, the state's about 2%, Fairbox revenue's around 24% to 25%. The city shares somewhere around probably 26%, 27%, and the feds are, I don't know, 49% or 50%, something like that, so. For every dollar we spend, I think the city's about 26 cents, based on 2012, where we're at to date.
Thank you.
And just one real quick comment, too. From a revenue standpoint, we'll probably be at around 450, 460 in revenues this year that we'll take in.
Okay, Mr. Clayton, you had a question a while ago?
Not on transportation. I was just trying to avoid musical chairs for Rich, so.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clayton?
Thank you.
Terry, John Wagner, if you don't mind coming up, I've got some questions in terms of infrastructure and water, and I think we've got the right players here. I saw John, and John and I have been numerous conversations about water pressure, and when I thought about water pressure, I was thinking, it was just recently, John, where we had a high-pressure impulse that took out some lines and valves, some old piping that we have in various parts of the city. And my question would be this, we've talked a lot about infrastructure, we've talked a lot about roads, and most of us tend to talk about what we can see, which is the road surface, but under the road surface, needless to say, we've got some aging plumbing, for lack of a better term. So if we spend the time and the money to repair a road, and yet underneath it is some of John's old pipes, I'm going to be mean here, you know, and so now we've got a new road over old piping, and now the piping lets loose, and we might have damage based on a leak underneath the road surface, or it goes without saying, to go back and repair it, we need to tear up that new road surface. How do those go hand in hand, so that when we spend money to improve the infrastructure in terms of the roads, that we're not doing something foolhardy in terms of putting a new road surface over old pipe that ultimately is going to let go and then cause a problem to our new road surface? Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I can probably address that. They all could, too, but I think I can handle that one. I'd say, generally speaking, if we're doing a total reconstruction on an existing street, we're going to be replacing water and sewer mains also, based on the shape they're in, obviously. If they're in really good shape, we may not. But if we're doing some rehabs, if we're doing a chip seal, we're not as concerned. Chip seals is maybe a seven to eight-year lifespan or turnaround on it. And even overlays, you know, if we've got a street that we don't expect to have to be in there in the next 15 years, we're not adverse to put an overlay on it. But if it's a water sewer line that needs work, we're not going to reconstruct the street without taking care of the water and sewer. And that's, that kind of plays into the picture of, you know, when I talk about $24 million for the big picture for streets, if we wave the magic wand and gave me $24 million, I've got a problem on the flip side, and that being water and sewer, because I don't have the revenues there at the current rates, to replace those, probably in the timely fashion we would need to. So, I mean, it's a big picture that we have to look at.
So typically, Terry, then, if, say in a project like East Centennial that's ongoing right now, do they dig down deep enough to inspect, to get a good look at those mains and the water lines, so that they know what's under there, or does that come as a surprise later? And maybe, and let's stay away from the specific location, I just, we walk by the.
That's probably easier.
Specific location, you can, I don't know if you want to address that or not, but.
Well, a lot of times, in an area where we know there's going to be a street reconstruction, if we know that the underground utilities have been replaced 10 years ago, you know, we have a pretty good idea, and then from the brake history, what kind of shape it's in, but a lot of times, what we'll do is we'll pothole, like you suggest, and actually take an inspection of the pipe. Our biggest problem comes when we get, we get these hot spots where we might not have a brake, let's say it's in one block. We might not have a main failure for years, and then all of a sudden, it pops, and then it pops again, and then it pops again, and then we got two in one week, and then three. Well, we're not budgeted to do a reconstruction of the road, but here, the water main has fallen apart, and we have to rearrange this capital improvements budget, move some projects around, and get in there and get that one done. That's the one that kind of throws the monkey wrench into the capital improvements project. It doesn't happen very often, but it does.
All right, so the bottom line, then, is we need to be careful, as we talk about infrastructure and roads, there's an underlying system under there that we need to take into consideration, too, and perhaps be doing both at the same time, which drives the price up.
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Nordstrom, were you wanting to talk again about your writing?
Sorry about this, not writers, oh.
Want me to turn the light on up there?
Terry, just correct me on the street scores. That also takes into consideration the utilities underground as well.
No, the pavement management index.
Is different.
Is strictly dealing with the street, really, rideability issues is what we're dealing with.
So that's just the visible score is what we, yeah.
That's correct.
It doesn't take into account.
And to do with the utilities.
Thank you.
Okay. I just want the record ref. Okay, I just want the record reflock that no matter how Mr. Nordstrom talks about his streets, the streets in my ward are worse. Thank you, and the mayor would like to talk.
I want to thank Richie for his comments, because that, that fits in nicely to the overall discussion on street rehab. If you take a look at the chart that's been, that's been presented a couple of times now at Public Works, but just, if you look at the fourth line down for 2013, the numbers come up from 762,868, that's just for line 437, 4370, which, which is the streets and contract maintenance line, and of course, beyond that, there's, uh, more than 11, approximately $11 million that's being put into other aspects of, of streets. And Terry Waltersdorf and Jerry Wright and I and Pauline have also been talking, Pauline Sumption have also been talking about some other ways to increase the attention paid to residential streets, and one of the ways, one of the, one of the possibilities that we're looking at is, is the idea of tapping into our unencumbered cash, not the reserves, but the unencumbered cash and the SAB 28 fund. The unencumbered cash currently, uh, right now has a balance of $5.8 million, but that's projected to be $2.3 million at the end of, at the end of 2012, and there would be some available in that possibly, and also, and also there is, uh, an available balance in the SAB 28 fund of approximately $3.4 million, so we'd be looking at a portion of, of those funds, and we're also looking at other avenues to try to, to, uh, increase the, uh, in, increase the, the focus and the spending on residential streets, and that would probably come forward as a supplemental, wouldn't be part of the 2013 budget, but I just wanted you to know that Jerry Wright and I and, and Terry and Pauline have been working on that, and, and we're not ready to bring it forward to Public Works next week, but hopefully soon we'll have something that, that we can put together to, to present, so. But I think it's important to know that if you look at the total number down below for 2013, we're looking at $32.5 million overall that's being spent on infrastructure, that, that doesn't even include the $40 million Jackson Springs Water Treatment Bond, $5 million of, of that is actually being spent on the airport water line, so, if you add that in, it's, uh, it's, it's even more than that, so. Just wanted you to know, I think, I think we're moving in the right direction, and the challenges, uh, there are definitely challenges, but if you look year over year over year, we are continuing to increase the focus on infrastructure, and I, I want to thank Terry for his efforts on updating that pavement, uh, you know, the pavement condition index, and all that was a lot of work to, what, what do we have, 380 some, 80 some mile, or 400 miles of streets?
Yeah, almost 400.
Not including alleys?
Correct.
So, we have, we have, we have a, a lot of infrastructure, and Terry's done, Terry and his team have done a great job of, of assessing our need. Thank you.
Actually, I'll credit Dale Tech and, and his staff, Todd Picasa, actually, um, on that, they do a great job, so.
Okay, anyone else? Have any questions for Terry or his supporters?
I'd like to say one more thing.
The mayor would like to say.
I, I would like to say one more thing, too, and then I want to, and John Wagner's up here, and, uh, John started working for the city when I was negative two, and I want to, celebrates, celebrates his 40th year this year with the city, and I want to thank him for his many years of service, and you'll be recognized, of course, soon at a council meeting, but you're here, and, and we just want to, to say thank you for all you've done for our, for our community.
Oh, thank you, mayor. Sometimes I get to kind of feeling like that, what was that, Methuselah, uh, Portis, uh, Rattall Gardens? Better be recognized and viewed. Thanks, Richie.
That was back before child labor laws. Any other questions for Terry? Okay, well, I thank you and your staff for all the hard work that y'all do to have the city run like a well-oiled machine.
Thank you, yes, they are. Thanks, guys.
Okay, Pauline, are you, um, ready to kind of talk about your revenue assumptions and, or do you want to talk about those on Monday night, or?
We can talk about them now.
Yeah, let's talk about them now, and then we can have the weekend to sleep on it and come back ready to do business on Monday.
And I actually handed out the revenue sheets at last week's meeting, did you bring them back?
Of course not. What it looks like. I have it.
Yeah, Steve has it. I don't know what your guys is probably.
Where'd you get that, Steve?
I do.
Hey, what's up there, dude?
No, not that one. That's just, no.
Hey, both sides. What's going on? I'm not this, huh? Yeah. I've reached into nobody, drag it all. Back after 15 minutes. Anyway.
I'm trying to find it, it's in here.
Uh, Mr. Laurenti, you want to give us the summary? You seem to be prepared with the form.
Do they have an endowment?
If you. If you have your budget book, or if you have access to the internet, it is in the budget book as well, not quite as little as the one that Mr. Laurenti stole.
Borrowed.
Anyway, as you're aware, at this time, the, the current budget proposal does not include the CPI amount that we could take in property tax, which is approximately $402,000. One of the questions asked was about the mill levy on that, and that is approximately $6 per 100,000 of home value, if, and that's based on the valuations as of November 1 of 2011, so that's assuming those stayed the same. Obviously, if the valuation goes up, that dollar amount will actually decrease, that's why we always say they're preliminary at this point, because we obviously don't know what the valuations are gonna be in November. So, we are actually budgeting just slightly over $14 million in property tax revenue. $600,000 of that is due to growth, and because when tax increment districts are paid off, they now come into the tax rolls again, they are also included in the growth as long as there is not an overlapping TID. So, there are some tax dollars in there for those TIDs that have been dissolved that did not have an overlapping one, but, so we have about $600,000 in grows, in growth. The sales tax, we looked at, uh, 2011 actuals and added a 2% increase over 2011. Now, that would put us at just shy of $21.9 million. Right now, and this is on legal.
Is that 3%?
You know what, it is 3%. My, my description is incorrect, it is 3%. And the, the sales tax report that's on next week's legal and finance agenda actually shows between 2011 through June and through June of 2012, there's an 8.78% increase, so we felt that was a very conservative number, but yet it was very realistic, you know, we averaged, we looked at the sales tax over, I don't know, I can't remember if it was a five-year period, and even with our down years, we averaged at least the 3%, so I felt very comfortable with using that for an assumption. The rest of the numbers, quite honestly, are based on historically what we've done within those different line items, as well as, uh, we got Brett involved with the building permit side of it, because he obviously knows what's going through his office now, what might be coming up, and so he helped us out with those numbers. There's also grant money in there, which you have previously seen the report on what we anticipate to receive for grant dollars in 2013 and for the remainder of 2012. Otherwise, it is a very conservative number, the interdepartmental charges are approximately what 2011 actual is, there's a little bit of difference because of the way some of our departments account for them. You do see on this where there's about $170,000 for payment in lieu of taxes, if you look at 2011 actuals, they're actually at $662,000, so we've dropped those considerably. When we did the 2012 budget, we took a third off of the pilt, and then for 2013, we removed, the idea was to take another third off, and so we did that, and then we removed the civic center completely from the pilt, and also anybody that would have paid less than $5,000 a year, and so our hope for next year then is to zero it out completely. There are a few transfers out, um, for operating transfers out for the barber building and the cemetery, the barber building is our, our transit building across the street. We do charge for rent for people, uh, like RSVP does not charge rent, and the city departments do not charge, uh, get charged rent, but the barber is charged rent over there as the, is the bus business themselves, and so, they charge the rent, and then we have expenses, obviously, and, and we typically do not have enough rent to cover that, but it's all based on how the federal money is working as well, so, it has been much higher in the past, but sometimes that cash has accumulated, so I brought it back down to a more reasonable number. The same is true for the cemetery, for this year, it's lower than it has been in 2011, we brought it back down to $25,000 because they started growing. Quite honestly, the cemetery, you will never see it, fund itself, that's just something that, it will not happen in, in my lifetime, and so you'll always see some kind of a, a transfer out from the general fund to help fund that. And then, of course, the undesignated fund balance, in 2012, we estimated that we, we would actually use $519,000 of undesignated fund balance. At this point, with the current budget as it is today, you would actually build your undesignated cash balance by $18,652. If you add the expenses, like with Compass wanting additional money, you, we would have to go into the undesignated cash, but we still would not be close to touching the reserve amount, so.
How much is undesignated?
Undesignated or total cash?
Total undesignated.
Undesignated cash to date is roughly about $5 million, actually, it's as of July 31st, but what's projected for the end of the year is about $2.3 million.
Mr. Laurenti, do you still have a question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pauline, if you could, the $600,000 that you talked about, I'm, I'm just gonna go back to kind of the beginning, the $600,000, I think it was the number you gave on the tax revenue coming back from expiring TIFs, is that correct?
It's not all from TIFs, but it's from what they call growth, so if somebody builds something in what was an empty lot, that's included in there, if there's an addition to a property, that's included in there, what's not as included is if evaluation just increases, or if we annex property, that's included in there, so.
Okay, so.
The TID is part of it.
That revenue is baked into the 2013 budget now? The anticipated revenue stream?
Yes.
That increase? Okay, very good. And then if you could, a little bit, and I kind of asked you on a sidebar a little bit, but, I don't know if the rest of my colleagues know, but we have some new people as well, but, what typically happens with the unencumbered cash year over year? And then the other question that kind of dovetails with it is that SAB 28 fund, if you can explain that a little bit, and what has typically happened with that historically?
So, undesignated cash, it honestly, it depends on how our revenues come in and how we spend our money. Uh, we've, we had a couple of years in which we, we spent quite a bit of our undesignated cash, in fact, when I started, uh, back in 2007, we had over $13 million in our general fund, and it got down to under $3 million when the economy was bad, but it's now been built back up to 12 million, so it really depends on the economic climate and where we are with revenues and expenditures. As far as the SAB 28 fund, that was actually a fund that was established many, many moons ago, and SAB stands for Special Assessment Bond. When it was first established, we actually had a special assessment bond that was issued to do assessment-type projects. Some of the things that are typically assessed are curb and gutter, streets can be assessed, but Rapid City has never chosen to assess them, sidewalks, cleanup of a property, if you do a demolition of a house and you assess it back to the property, that would go through there, and, um, so when we did the project and the people paid us back, we had both the principal and the interest that was charged, and I believe, right now we charge 5% interest, but it was up to 9% at one time, and it could have been higher when the interest rates were higher. So, that went back into the fund, it's almost become a revolving fund, and it's been growing. We do use it for our assessed projects, uh, we've also used it to, for projects like within a tax increment district, we've used it, and then the tax increment district paid it back, but it, right now it continues to grow, it's just shy of $4 million right now. Um, the mayor alluded to about 3.4, and that's because I have my eye on about $500,000 of it for, uh, my software upgrade.
I thought that was South History.
Well, that was gonna be repaid, though, so, if I, Terry was promising me he will repay that. So, typically, this is used for something that would get repaid, a revolving fund. If we choose to go out and build a new street where there was gravel before, this council could choose to assess it back to the property owners, and if we have the money in this fund, then we do not have to borrow. If we do not have the money in the fund, then we would have to borrow and do a bond again, and, and charge all that back to the, to the benefiting property owners.
I have two other questions, and.
You still have the floor.
Two other questions, and I'm not sure on the SAB 28 fund, but the unencumbered cash fund, that is outside of the reserve, correct?
Unencumbered cash is outside of the reserve, the numbers I was giving you before was total cash balance.
And do those, either of those funds garner an interest rate?
They all do, and it depends on where they're at. We have multiple, um, bank accounts for various purposes, which, they're getting less than 1%, and then we also have four managed accounts, uh, which are investment accounts that we have money mark, or money managers for us, and quite honestly, with the interest and with selling and trading of these securities, we probably make 5.5 to 6% return on those investments, so, it just kind of depends on where the money's at, and I believe we have, of all of the city's monies, because we commingle all of the city monies into X number of accounts, and so, we allocate the interest back out to them based on how we keep track of it, on the treasures report and in the fund system, and, so some of those funds don't have what we call the investments, but some do. The last cash report that I saw showed about $94 million in total cash for the city, and about $50 million is sitting in managed accounts. I think it's 40, 40 to 50 million, I can't remember the number off the top of my head.
Okay, all right, thank you, Pauline. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else have questions? Did you want to make a comment? Okay, I, oh, okay, mayor would like to speak.
Pauline, when you addressed the CPI earlier, you were talking about just the 2013.
Just the 2013. We're still trying to research the 2010 CPI. I've always believed that that was still available this year, and this was the last year that would still be available for us to, to claw it back, per se. The Department of Revenue disagrees with that assessment, and our city attorneys, two of them that I've talked to in the office, do not agree with the Department of Revenue's assessment, so we're, we're trying to get the Department of Revenue attorneys to talk to our attorneys so we can know for sure, um, so Joel is working on that on our behalf too, because the direction from Wade was sort of going to court, if DOR is not gonna let us do it, we can't do it, but we're gonna try and get the attorneys talking so we know for sure at this point. So we're, we're trying to get the Department of Revenue attorneys to talk to our attorneys so we can know for sure. So Joel is working on that on behalf too, because the direction from Wade was sort of going to court. If DOR is not going to let us do it, we can't do it. But we're going to try and get the attorneys talking so we know for sure. At this point, though, I'm, I'm trying to focus in on the 2013, just in case it comes back saying that we can't. I also know that the questions have been asked about if 2010 were available, can you take 2010 and not touch 2013? That answer would be yes, if that were available. Another question is, could you take a portion of the CPI and not all of it? Yes, you can. The, the county just, and the state statute just tells you what the maximum taxes that you can take. They don't tell you what portions that you can break it into.
Okay, and so the CPI for, that we could take right now would be $402,000 or some fraction of that.
Yep.
And that is kind of a cost of living, an inflation?
It's typically the inflationary adjustment. So that way, we have the same purchasing power, like Alderman Nordstrom was talking about earlier with the Journey. $325,000 every year is less today, really, than it was 10 years ago.
Right. Goes into the buying effect, so when we look at it is that if you don't take it, you're going backwards, or as far as your buying power is concerned.
That is the general philosophy with it.
Okay. Was there anything else that you wanted to talk about, Pauline? Just if you have questions.
I've got one more. This Voyager account that we have, can you explain that to me?
That is one of our managed accounts. That is where they go out and buy, by state statute, we can only invest in certain types of investments. We can't go and buy Coca-Cola stock or Google stock. We have to buy secure investments. So we can do T-bills, and we can do government securities and government-backed securities, and we can now do South Dakota municipal securities. They have to be AAA rated, but we pay them a certain percentage to, to manage our money for us.
Do you know roughly what we get out of it, because the chemistry with the monthly that we get on it, that it really is an increase in money?
Well, a lot of it depends on the market, because quite honestly, we draw all of the interest off of those accounts. We don't reinvest, because we use that for operating. So what's typically left in there is, is the actual principal amount, and if there's any gain or loss on the investment. And, but the interest itself is, we get a check every month for the interest amount.
Do you know roughly what that means on a basis?
Let me look quick. I might be able to at least tell you on an annual basis.
While Pauline's looking that up, also, I just wanted to tell you that I'll be asking you about what would work best for you for a council retreat. Would we prefer a Saturday, half-day Saturday, or a night evening? So you can be thinking about that, because you will be polled, and I think it's going to be important for us to get together and...
Poll and vote.
Both.
Poll and vote.
That we get together and, um, just, just...
The first week of October, I'm going to be out of town. I think I will, too, that same week, this week, that week.
Yes. It's nice to see the professionalism shining through here.
It's funny.
So you can be thinking about that.
Doesn't retreat mean run away?
Yeah, backwards.
Well, maybe I should come up with another word, but it's for us to learn and grow and provide us skills so that we can serve our community better.
Some of us learn slowly. How long do we have to do that? To learn and grow, or is that a kind of retreat? I've had all my life to grow, and that didn't happen. That's how it's worked. That's what I tried to say, Richie.
Pauline, have you come up with anything yet? The conversation's deteriorating fast.
Okay, I will tell you, in the month of January, our Merrill Lynch account brought in about $5,600 in interest, and that is our smallest managed account. Voyager, which is our largest managed account, brought in just shy of $40,000 in interest in one month. Edward Jones brought in $13,300.
And this money goes, what, into the undergum of debt?
It actually originally goes into consolidated interest, and then those money, those funds who had put money into the investments get allocated out to them. And so like the general fund, which has some investments, it goes into the cash balance. So it goes into the cash balance of whoever has the investment.
Thank you, Pauline. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Pauline, is some of that money, like from enterprise funds, money?
Some is.
Okay, so it's not just going out of the general fund, then?
No.
It's all the funds?
I know, like, the Vision Fund has money in there, CIP has money in there, I believe the water does, Solid Waste does for sure. So, yeah, there, there's a multitude of that. We have to actually, at the end of the year, try to allocate it back out.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Okay, so we'll meet again on Monday night, 5:00, food in the caucus room, and hopefully come with your boxing gloves, and hopefully we'll, we'll finish up on Monday night and get this budget passed.
If we don't finish Monday, we go Tuesday, Wednesday.
Yeah, if we don't finish, we continue on, but hopefully we will, we'll finish.
So tell us about this retreat. How long? What's it all about?
Oh, we don't know. Just be thinking. I'll email you later. So can I get a motion to adjourn?
I made the motion second.
Okay. Scott motion, and Laurenti second. And be expecting another love note from me. Thanks.